I'm going to call the Board a selection meeting to order for Thursday evening, January 21st, 2021. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to an order issued by the Governor of Massachusetts dated March 12th, 2020 suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20F so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. If anyone is recording this meeting, may I ask you to please identify yourself at this time by using the raise hand function? Okay, seeing none, this is our second meeting this week, not unusual for the Board for selectmen to meet twice during budget season, and we're going to be pleased to welcome a number of our department heads and speak to a number of different budgets. Prior to doing that, we do have votes to approve minutes. Joe and Bill, I'm prepared to move on all four sets of minutes. If anybody would like to make motions or if anybody wants to defer any of the minutes, happy to do that as well.
Yep, I'm prepared to move.
I'm ready to move as well. I'll make the first one if you're ready.
Please.
Make a motion to approve the minute stated December 18th, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes stated December 22nd, 2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
I'll move to approve the minutes dated January 14th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated January 20th, 2021.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary? Aye. Heidi Gaul, thank you so much. Minutes are challenging, especially given the number of meetings that we've been holding, and I know that you're doing a number of things, including supporting a lot of different committees and continuing to support our office. So, thank you so much for the prompt minutes. We are going to review a number of departmental budgets, and this evening, we're going to start with the Building Department, and we welcome Mike Clancy, our Building Commissioner. And Mike, I think Michelle has put the presentation up on the screen, so I'll open it up to you, then open it up to colleagues and the public for questions and comments.
Sure. My name is Michael Clancy. I'm the Building Commissioner for the Town of Hingham. This is FYI 20, excuse me, 2-2 budget presentation for the Building Department. The Building Inspection Services Department falls under the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety. We enforce a series of 14 international codes, including the State Building Code, Residential, Commercial, the Fire Code, Existing Building Code, Mechanical Code, Swimming Pool and Spa Code, Energy Conservation Code, Architectural Asket, Access Board for Disabilities, the Zoning Act, Chapter 48, the Hingham Zoning Bylaw, the Hingham General Bylaws, the Plumbing Gas Code, and the Electrical Codes. The building officials are on call 24/7. As of November this year, 2020, we have brought in fees of a total of $1,146,459. The breakdown of that is Building Sheet Metal Certificate of Inspections, Final Cost After Davids Certificate of Use and Occupancies, $989,904. Electrical fees collected, electrical plumbing and gas, $156,555. Total permits to date issued, 2,984. Total inspections to date, Building Sheet Metal, Electrical, Plumbing, Gas, zoning complaints, Building projects under construction and nearing completion, the new Dunkin' Donuts completed at 315 Lincoln Street, the Bathing Beach Bath House Concession Stand, 31 Otis Street, Falconary Construction at Six Station Street, LLC Six Station Street, Amazon Distribution Center, 100 Industrial Park Road, Derby Street Shops continue to renovate, Lincoln Plaza and the Hingham Shipyard continue to renovate. The staff COVID-19 Restaurant Reopening Group and COVID-19 Incident Command Team, I was part of that. The Building Department transition was seamless when the Town Hall closed due to our online permitting. We were able to continue with our everyday duties, implemented the COVID-19 protocol to continue property and projects inspections safely. The salaries for the Building Department are $238,750. That is offset by the Building Revolving Account. We have six full-time personnel, one Building Commissioner, two administrative assistants, three building officials, six part-time personnel, which is six building officials. Expenses of $15,960. The major items are $5,000 for in-state travel, which is inspections, $2,678 for vehicle fuel, $2,500 for code books. The Building Revolving Fund credited with plumbing, gas, and electrical permit fees and is used to pay the related staff inspectors salaries and expenses.
Mike, thank you. At this point, I'm going to invite, I'll start with Bill Ramsey since Joe says I always start with him. So, Bill, questions and comments, questions or comments on the Building Department budget?
Mike, I looked at your FY21 budget, and it looks like you're coming in right on target this year, so I don't have any specific questions. Mike, I did want to say it's great to see you back. You know, you've done, you do an excellent job for us in the Building Department and with the reopening group and so many other things that you've done for us. So, thank you for all you do, and it's good to see you on the men, Mike.
Thank you very much.
Joe?
Thank you, Mary.
Mike, so is now a good time to challenge you to basketball because your mobility is quite limited?
I thought it was a run.
That's right, I was talking about that. I mean, I've worked with Mike for a number of years, and I've always been impressed by the quality of his work and the leadership of his department. So, Mike, thank you. Just a question on presentation, and this may be more for Tom versus Mike. Tom, could you just explain how the salaries are split between the two sheets because I just don't follow how that's working?
So, Joe, just to clarify, are you looking at page 122 in the budget books?
Right, so you've got the total salary lineup, which is the 238,750, but then it's actually, it seems to be divided with the 238 and then another 279. So, I just want to understand how that...
Sure, thank you for the question, Joe. Sorry, I was muted and I couldn't unmute myself. So, what we do here, the reason for the two conversation worksheets is the, is our, it's us utilizing the revolving fund, the Building Revolving Fund. So, what we do is for the, anyone who touches the, and has a role in facilitating plumbing and gas, is it electric too, Mike?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, plumbing, gas, and electric permits. We cover or pay for half of their salaries. So, it's the two administrative assistants and the Building Commissioner as well as the plumbing, gas, and electric, actually, the two administrative assistants and the Building Commissioner, half of their salary, and then all of the salary of the plumbing, gas, and electric inspectors.
Right, it's split. So, but in other words, if I wanted to know the total amount of Building Commissioners, you know, the whole staff salary, it's not the 238,750 as listed here. I've got to actually go beyond that and take the 238,750, add another 279,232 to that.
That's right.
And I can track the 238,750 and see that it's really on target from what's happened over prior years. It's basically flat. How do I do that with the other part, the 279,232 part? Because there, I don't have any reporting beyond the fiscal year 2022.
Well, where this is salary, although there will be times when we have people come and go, the department there is pretty steady, but where this is salary, there shouldn't be much fluctuation.
Right, I'm not expecting it. That's why I wanted to confirm.
Yes.
So, yeah, Joe, what you could look at is, and we'll be seeing a warrant article over the next couple of weeks, but there is a perennial warrant article to transfer money out of the Building Revolving Fund.
Yep.
Which is used to subsidize those. So, if we look at, if we look at the value of, that warrant article is a financial warrant article.
Yes.
If you look at the amount of dollars that's transferred out, that's how you can look year over year. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what it was last year, but I think it's been in, oh, Mike, I think knows.
It was $350,000.
Okay.
So, it looks like it's, it looks like it's down.
Yes, we didn't use that.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, that's the authorization.
So, Mike, thank you. I would just point out, so Tuesday night in Inside Town Finance, as we talked about local receipts, and one of the big components of local receipts is building permit revenue. And as Mike pointed out in his presentation, in calendar year 20, which overlapped two fiscal years, we've collected about $1.1 million in permit revenue. So, the other night when I said building permit revenue is one of the biggest pieces, here it is. And I would further point out that this building permit revenue is four times greater than the cost for the Building Department, for operating the Building Department. So, again, this is another example of where we have staff that generates revenue. And I also think that's important because to the extent that, to the extent that this department is not staff to the level it is, we're not going to bring in that revenue because we don't have the people to kind of do those inspections. So, it's again, one of these places where we have to look at that. Mike, just in general, I was curious, what has the Building Department's experience been since COVID-19 in terms of building permit activity? Is it about the same? Is it less? Is it more?
We're off about 150 permits total between building, electrical, plumbing, and gas and sheet metal from the previous year. Just off the top of my head, we usually do around 1,300 building permits a year, and I think this year, we did about 1,240 something. Of course, I haven't been in the office, but so we're not off that much. I wouldn't even say we're off 5%.
Yeah, and have you noticed, have you noticed any changes? You know, you also process building permits for, you know, if I want to renovate my kitchen, we get a building permit. If there's, you know, some of the developments that you've talked about, you know, for example, Broadstone Bear Cove or the Amazon Distribution Facility, those building permits are bigger, so they bring in more revenue. Have you noticed any differences in residential and commercial building activity this year due to COVID?
It did slow down for the beginning of the pandemic for probably about six weeks, but once everybody got comfortable with wearing masks and they came out with a COVID policy as far as on the job site and things like that, it kind of went right back to the way it was before. And again, some of the homeowners did not want us to come in the house, which is okay, we understand that. So, we did work it around where we found out if they would like to go out and get a cup of coffee or go down and get, whatever they could do to leave the house for a half an hour, an hour or so, then we would all get together and go in separately into the house in one time. So, we didn't, you know, just suck their family too much. We did the same thing on some of the commercial projects. But Hingham is a busy town, as you know, and to tell you the truth, it did not affect the town as much as I would have thought, but people were home during the pandemic and still are, and they want to renovate their homes and do their backyards and decks and just keep up with their neighbor.
Thank you very much, Mike. That's helpful, not just in terms of this year, but thinking ahead for the next year because, you know, the building permit revenue is an important source of revenue for the town. Would anyone in the public like to ask a question or make a comment with respect to the Building Department budget? Seeing none, Mike, thank you again for being here today. We're glad that your recuperation is going well. We'll look forward to seeing you back in Town Hall very shortly. And thank you and thank your team for everything that you've done during the pandemic. Your ability to pivot to remote working without really disrupting any projects was really quite remarkable, and we appreciate the efforts of you and your team.
Well, I'll tell you, Mary, I couldn't, I couldn't do it without the team I have. They're very good.
Yeah, we're very, we're very fortunate across the town.
Mike, you've got a great team, and somehow they put up with you.
This is true, Joe.
Thank you, Mike. The next budget we have is conservation, and it's my pleasure to welcome Lonnie Fornier, our Conservation Agent. Bill and Joe, the Conservation Budget is on page 23. Welcome, Lonnie.
Hi, happy new year, everyone. I don't think I've seen you all since we crossed that bridge, so thank you for having me.
Good evening.
You can hear me okay, and it's okay to start?
Please go ahead, thank you.
Okay. So, in the Conservation Department, our primary mission is to support the Conservation Commission and their task to uphold the State Wetlands Protection Act and our local Wetlands Protection Bylaw. I would say honestly, it consumes about 90% of our time. Any construction activity that happens within close proximity to rivers or streams or wetlands or ponds or the ocean first needs to come through us before they can put a shovel in the ground. So, we are fairly busy. It's a small team, but we're able to keep up with it. We work very well together and are efficient, so I'm very thankful for that. Some of our other responsibilities include maintaining the public lands that are owned by the Commission. There are a variety of those, both in size and accessibility. Some of them are smaller parcels that are entirely wet, and other parcels are larger and very popular like Morbiver Park or the newly acquired Laner Property. Those have trails, require maintenance activities, routine cleanups, that kind of thing. We also coordinate with federal, state, and local and nonprofit entities on environmental projects. This ranges from permitting partnerships where we're relying on each other for combined feedback and comments on issuing wetlands permits, to doing more hunting, like making sure our fish ladders are in top shape every year and coordinating with the state on getting any repairs done there, or holding an annual walk with, say, the Hinghamland Conservation Trust. So, getting people outside, tending to our natural resources, and also coordinating on regulatory permits. We manage the Commission's hunting program as well. There are two seasons every year, the spring turkey season and the fall deer season. That is not open to everyone, and it's also not on every Commission property, but it is quite a bit of work for us at the start of every season, and then it requires management in the field as well. And then we also respond to a lot of citizen inquiries, everything from real estate agents wondering what the potential for a house is, whether they can add in addition, to new homeowners, to long-time homeowners who just want to add the deck or, you know, build that garage or whatever the project might be. We help a variety of consultants as well, professionals that are hired by applicants and getting them through the permitting process successfully. And then lastly, this is mainly my responsibility, providing GIS and other mapping support to municipal departments. And an important note there is that very soon, the town is going to be moving forward with selecting a GIS coordinator, and those responsibilities will then shift over to that person and the IT department as a result. And so, here, I wish I would have gone before Mike. Here are my low-league revenue numbers. Application numbers first. I always say so good about it, and then I have that one right off the graph.
Lonnie, it's all great. It's all great.
That's true, thank you for that. So, these figures are calendar year figures, and they're up to date as of mid-November this year. That's when we, basically, all the department heads were asked to start working on these presentations. So, it's, I will explain two interesting things about each of these graphs. On the left-hand side, you'll see applications steadily going down over the last five years, and I don't think that's reflective of anything the department does or can't do. I think it's largely reflective of the level of development in town and that there are just fewer opportunities for people to expand, particularly in areas where there are wetlands, rivers, streams, the harbor, that kind of thing. There could be an economic factor there as well, but mostly, you know, I look back to prior to 2016, and we're thinking about the shipyard being developed, we're thinking about Linden Pond going in. Those areas are now more built out than they were before, and so I think we're seeing a steady decline based on the level of development in town. And then for estimated revenue, and an important point here is that the revenue numbers are not necessarily directly linked to the number of applications. Our applications vary based on the type of work and the type of application. And so, with 105 applications, I would never be able to tell you or even ballpark, really, what the revenue is associated with those applications. We have a very simple application where the fee is $30, and then we could have something that is thousands of dollars in fees because it requires reviewing a wetland line in person flat by flat by flat. And so, that's more tedious and time-consuming, so the fees are higher with that. A little bit of an explanation there. It's tricky to estimate both number of applications and anticipated revenue on any given year, but I am happy with the numbers that we have, especially for 2020, given COVID, and I can get into that a little bit later. And then this slide changed just a bit from the last time I presented it, and I, it makes me smile every time because initially, the town acres and, so the town-owned acres and Aquarian Acres were different slices of the pie, and since the town acquired a water company, I was able to merge those two together and then saw that the town owned, so this is not just Conservation Commission land, this is land owned by the Sleckman, the Recs Department, it's all town entities. I think it's really impressive to see that the town owns about as much acreage as Wapata City Park. I think that's really commendable of us. And I don't know, I think that's pretty exciting once I saw the numbers all merged together like that. So, good for us, it certainly keeps us busy, and hopefully, in terms of the open space, it gives people plenty of opportunity to get outside. And so, some key initiatives moving forward, the two top items have been lingering for quite a while. It's still a high priority to get the Open Space Plan finalized. It has been conditionally approved by the state, so it's just a matter of incorporating our edits and getting some final numbers and maps together for them. It's really about just finding the time to get that done and submitted to them, and then I think it will be final approved in their world. Secondarily, there are just a few remaining conservation restrictions that need to be finalized. It is both on my radar and Town Council's radar. We had a recent setback with a change in staff on the state end, and then some subsequent domino effects where they were changing the template that we used and had everybody on board with. And so, a little bit of a setback in staffing and templates and sort of been agreed upon. Everybody's happy with the language written, and then boom, we were setback a little bit, but we're working on it. The third piece is really important to me. It really makes, it's some of the brightest spots in my day and in my job. It's partnering with local organizations, groups, and volunteers. These are organized, formed entities, or maybe just a group of high school seniors looking for community service hours. This past summer, I worked with the girls' softball team. They were amazing. We were doing hard work clearing a stone wall of vegetation. It was really hot. They had music playing and were singing along and didn't complain once, and it was, it just the spirit of making the best of it and working with the first people who see a job ahead of them and just they get to get it done is really, really fun. On the top right picture is an image of the Home Meadows sign recently being replaced and restored, and that was an Eagle Scout project. And so, a really great partnership is with the scout organizations in town that happened this year, and I think it turned out really well, but they are in need of completing service projects in town, and I have plenty of projects to hand out, and so that's a really great partnership, and it's something that they can be proud of for a really long time. You know, that Eagle Scout's going to go off to college, but in five or 10 years, whenever it comes back to visit, that sign will still be there, and he'll have a lot of self-pride just knowing that he had a role in having that sign there today. A high priority for the Conservation Commission is to revise their wetland regulations. We continue to do some critical thinking on what the regulations currently say, and we're looking at climate change data and other impacts in town and what's appropriate. Specific example is construction in the flood zone. What makes sense from an environmental standpoint? What makes sense from allowing people to improve their properties and not restricting that? But it continues to get more and more prevalent to the Commission, that some updates need to be made, and so we're working on that actively. And then finally, largely due to some, the COVID situation, we have a renewed focus on property maintenance and improvement. I always knew that some properties were more popular than others, but certainly, over the last year, we've seen that interest double, I would say. Many more people out enjoying the parks, and so that is a good thing, and it puts the onus on us to make sure that the trails are clear, the trails are marked, there's maps available. We want to make sure that people are safe and can enjoy the properties, and so that's a new priority for us because people were seeking closer to home and enjoying our properties. And the picture on the bottom there is what I would call a nice double whammy. Not only did a nice windstorm come through and take the tree down, but the very bottom of the trunk on the left-hand side, we can be, see a blue bleed. And so, not only did the tree come down and require us cleaning up, but now there's a trail marker that is not as visible as it once was. So, it's an ongoing project, and it's often a challenge to find the time to be able to get out there and do all the improvements that are needed. Finally, some COVID-19 impacts. It was fairly hard for our office. We don't work in an easily remote situation. Our regulations require that paper applications be submitted. That didn't change through COVID, and so when we're talking about one person having access to Town Hall once a week for months at a time, it made the processing and the receiving and the communication with applicants challenging, but we persevered, and I'm really proud of us for doing that. We were able to hold regular virtual meetings. What seemed like an impossible challenge is now routine, and I'm sure you can all relate to that. So, we're getting pretty good at Zooms. We had more DIY applications this year, so Mike alluded to this, you know, homeowners staying at home, feeling like they have the time to be able to tackle that next project. Maybe they'll be able to keep a closer eye on contractors. Maybe they're just tired of looking at that, you know, sad patio, and they want to see it spruced up or add a fire pit, they can spend more time outside. So, we saw a lot more homeowners... So we saw a lot more homeowners taking on the application requirements themselves, which required a lot more time from staff to guide them through the application. Our applications are generated by the state. They can seem like a completely different language when you get to them. And so there are often a lot of questions to people who don't really understand the language in the application, what they need to submit, when, that kind of thing. So we spent a lot of time guiding applicants more than usual during COVID. And then finally, another sort of funny piece at this point is that the registry of deeds was still requiring wet signatures on all of our applications for items that need to be reported at the registry. And so we started a little envelope chain where the day after the meeting, we would put all the signature sheets in an envelope and drop it off at the first commissioner's mailbox, and then they would route it from one house to the next, to the next, to the next, until finally it came back to town hall. So we're issuing permits a little bit slower than usual because of this requirement, but we're still getting them out and well under the state deadline of doing so. So our commissioners have been really good about watching for the envelope and turning it as quickly as possible as possible. Finally, we adapted to some attentive, we adapted to socially distanced site inspections. It was challenging at first. You know, I ran into the experience where I know everyone's home. I don't want to just walk into their backyard and startle them, so I go to the front door to let them know who I am, but who's going to answer the door when I have a mask over my face? And so there was the balancing act of getting used to masks, getting used to what people will be comfortable with, trying to reach out, schedule something ahead of time instead of just stopping by. But we adapted, and I think we adapted as a town and we adapted as an office, and I think we're doing really well now. Finally, the last two pieces that I'll highlight is that, as I touched on earlier, we saw much, much higher use in our conservation properties than I think ever before. And so this is really great that we have these resources and that people know about them, and they were really glad to enjoy them. But on the downside, we also saw much more instances of misuse of properties, including campfires. One of those campfires led to a three-acre fire at Trick Hammer. The fire department had to respond to lots of ad hoc shelters and camping and graffiti and litter. And so with more use comes more problems. And we're in the process, since about the fall, we've been in the process of just trying to focus on bringing properties back to pre-COVID conditions. I don't want to sound too doom and gloom on that. It's not like everything's been trashed, but certainly we solve more problems than we ever had with misuse of the properties. And then for salaries, currently we're looking at two for full-time personnel, myself and the administrative secretary, and then one part-time personnel as basis and conservation officer. For upcoming expenses, the major items are property maintenance. That's the R and M grounds line, if you're looking at any individual sheets for the budget. That's $5,000 budgeted per year. Honestly, could I double or triple that and still make use of it? Yes, we have a lot of acres and they need a lot of attention, but for now, that's keeping things on the level. And then next, one thing that I wanted to work towards in the coming year is feasibility or design of a laner, a parking area for the laner property. That has long been a desire, ever since we were initially, you know, looking at the property. People wanted to know where we would park, where would the entrance be. Between the acquisition and today, South Pleasant Street was paved, and so we've been stuck in the moratorium phase of just waiting for the moratorium to be lifted. That is going to be lifted in January of '22. And so at this point, it seems to make a lot of sense to start figuring out where it will go, what it will look like, and how much it will cost. But the laner property continues to be of interest to many people, and it's great to get features in the place that make it easier to, easier and safer to access. So that's a project that I have coming up for the next year.
Lonnie, thank you. Thank you so much. This is extremely comprehensive. Joe, questions on the conservation budget?
Yeah, Lonnie, thank you. That was really incredibly comprehensive. I've worked with you for a number of years and always very impressed. You, you put up, there was a slide that a little over 5,000 acres of open space were owned by the town. Does that include school property?
Yes.
So it's municipal on the school side. And two other areas that I know you have been and will be spending time on, I'm not sure they were highlighted sufficiently in your presentation. One is, there's, you know, there's efforts to come up with a new treaty by law for the town, and lots of treaties on lots of conservation land or areas that are subject to conservation and, you know, your wetland jurisdiction. And so you're involved in that, and also, you know, your, yours and the commission's expertise on the waterfront harbor, wharf issues. You mentioned resilience, so I know that has been and will be spending, taking account for a fair amount of your time. I was looking at the charts where you had the revenue and the number of permits, and it's really interesting to see how those numbers jumped. Back in 2016, it looked like the per, per application fee on average was over $229. In 2018, it dropped to 151, and now in 2019, it was up to over 190. And then 220 is back to 2020, back to about $178 per application. And I, my understanding is that that is due to the mix of those applications?
Correct. It's a direct link between the type of work being proposed and what application is appropriate for that work to come through under review. So we have an administrative review application, which is processed in-house and is $30. That's meant for very, very small projects, maintenance projects, and basis species removal, that very, very low-level project. Another important piece of that is septic system replacements. And I think that administrative review application came on board before I would work for the town. But my sense is that the main motivation behind it was for the septic system replacements, especially for systems that had failed. And so they didn't want people with failed systems to have to wait two, three weeks, whatever it would be, to get before the commission to get an approval. So admin reviews are $30. If someone's taking on a smaller project, then they're eligible for that. But if they're demolishing a whole house and rebuilding it, and it's in the buffer zone, then that's an NOI. And the fees are entirely different. You're talking about hundreds of dollars for an NOI versus $30 for an admin review. So the scope of work determines the type of application, and with the different types of applications comes different application fees.
In terms of your budget, it's up almost 7% from last year. But everything else, everything looks pretty flat. Where are the increases that account for the 7% jump?
The only thing that I can think of off the top of my head is that we, we put in for an increase of hours in the assistant conservation position role.
I see.
Yep. It was, it was currently at 20 hours a week, and we increased that to 24 hours. Could I make use of a full-time assistant conservation officer position? Absolutely.
Sure.
But the person we have in the role right now is incredibly smart and talented and efficient, and she's struggling some responsibilities at home as well. And so 24 was what she could commit to initially until things settle out with COVID and school and that kind of thing. So that's likely where most, if not all, of the increase is, is in that assistant conservation officer salary.
Well, terrific. Thank you again for all you do for the town.
Yep. Questions, federally? Thanks, Lonnie. I've always been asked about the increase in the part-time tower institute, so thanks for, thanks for clarifying that. I have no other question, Lonnie. Just you mentioned a lot of residents looking for community service hours come through. So thank you for helping out. I know I've sent a couple individuals here wire recently, and particularly a couple Eagle Scouts. I appreciate you helping out and getting them
Sure.
the work that they need.
That's a great opportunity, Lonnie. As a first shout-out, right? Anyone has ideas or is looking for a tech, for some jobs? We have them.
Yes. Yeah, great. So tomorrow I log into my inbox, and I have way more tools that I've brought before. It's a good problem to have.
Yeah.
I think you're really overestimating our viewership, but okay.
Yeah, Lonnie, this, this was really comprehensive. I don't have any questions. I do know that, you know, between the increase in, in permits related to homeowners who, you know, wanted to do various projects, I mean, I, I think swimming pool companies have made a lot of money in the last year. And then understanding that the volume of work in your department increased due to COVID, and the complexity of getting all that work done also increased because of the regulatory requirements, I, I, you know, I just want to extend my thanks. Lonnie, just a quick question. The Conservation Commission, I believe there is still, I know it's a seven-person commission. Am I correct? There is still one vacancy?
That's right.
Yeah. So I just want to, you know, during the course of this meeting, I just want to give a shout-out for, for, you know, citizen volunteers. Lonnie's presentation just gave you an excellent overview of the very important work of the Conservation Commission. And, you know, to the extent that anyone is, is interested in serving on the commission, it's a seven-person commission. They meet monthly. There's a little bit of driving of packets from one commissioner's house to another. But Lonnie, if anyone is interested, I would, I would ask you to please complete a town bank application, and either Joe or Bill or myself will be in touch. And if you'd like to understand a little bit more about what the Conservation Commission does, I'd suggest you look at the Conservation Commission page on the town website and read the minutes of the commission, and I think that gives people a sense of the, you know, the nature of the work. But I know that with the increased activity, your chair reached out to us a few months ago, and we haven't forgotten, but we also, so we're, we're, we're working on trying to fill that position for you.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone in the public have any questions with respect to the conservation budget? Okay. Stephen, Lonnie, thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good rest of the night.
You too. It's my pleasure now to introduce Andrea Young, our historical administrator. She's going to go through the historic preservation budget. Good evening, Andrea. Welcome.
My name is Judith.
Okay, hi. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
You're on.
Thank you very much. So we are, as you know, there are two commissions that I staff. One is the Historical Commission, and the other is the Historic District Commission. And they both have very different responsibilities. But all together, they are charged with preserving the town's historic architectural and archaeological resources, and to preserve the town's character and maintain the sense of place that we call Hynam. The Historical Commission plans and implements programs to identify, evaluate, and protect historic resources. And that is the role that's required by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966 and Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 80. The Historical Commission maintains and regularly updates the town's comprehensive community inventory of historic resources. And increasingly, we've had more and more people ask to be placed on that inventory. So because they value their, their properties and want to make sure that there's some, some type of protection for them. The commission also works with town departments to ensure the consideration of historic resources and community planning efforts, and in project permitting and oversight, and participates in the development of the new master plan. And to that end, I have to say that our relationship with the building department, with conservation, core health, is, is really key to us being able to do our jobs properly. And not a day goes by that I'm not thankful for, you know, Dean and Sue in building. So I just wanted to mention that. We are waiting for the, the master plan is, as you know, nearing completion. And so there will be recommendations in there. I have seen the draft, and so we will be, that'll be part of our initiatives for the coming year, whatever recommendations come out of that. And the commission, yeah, thank you. We coordinate the review of state or federally funded local projects with the Mass Historical Commission to ensure protection of local historic resources. I would say most recently, that was, well, of course, we were partly involved with the Alliance project. We also currently received notification that there will be an archaeological study done on the properties surrounding the Old Ship Parish in preparation for the possible, well, the proposed development on that site. And also, the commission develops and implements programs to promote public awareness of Hynam's history and heritage. And I have to say that we've got some very talented people on the Historical Commission. We have, we have a published author, Jim Conley, whose idea was to hold an essay contest for high school students in town. And that has been very successful. Unfortunately, this past year, this was our second year, and during this past year, we were not able to award the, the monetary prize or the plaque at a student assembly. So it was just, unfortunately, you know, we missed out on that, or they missed out on that publicity. The winner did. And let's see, we have also, as you know, we, we've had to dispense with or put on hold the preservation award program, which was most unfortunate. We had a very successful program last year. It was the first. And so I was disappointed that we had to put that on hold due to COVID. Same with the Obrich Island Day and some of the other opportunities that we like to have. So the District Commission preserves and protects the town's historic and architectural resources, landscapes, streetscapes, and sense of place. This commission is, conducts design review of proposed projects in historic districts, and uses the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties as the, as the baseline for their evaluation and review. They also confer with property owners and their representatives to facilitate the application and design review process. Very often, we encourage people to hold, to have an informal discussion with the commission, because before they invest the time and money in, in plans that may or may not, you know, be approved, at least we can discuss the concept, hopefully saving them some time and money. Also, the commission collaborates with applicants and the representatives to achieve an end product that meets their needs and meets the standards set forth by the Secretary of the Interior. So that's sometimes a challenge, but I think we've done a pretty good job. I think most people leave happy. Of course, the only thing you hear are the complaints. So, okay. This is a map, thanks to Lonnie, of the historic districts in town. And we have about 100, I'm sorry, 1,500 inventoried properties. And 700 of those are located in historic districts. And the remainder are on the, under the jurisdiction of the Historical Commission, and protected by the demolition delay by law. So now, our key initiatives are to restore the bell ringing So, um, now, uh, our key initiatives are to restore the bell ringing components in the Memorial Bell Tower. And I'm happy to say that our, um, Benjamin Sunderland, um, is going to be coming, I think, next week. Um, he also has managed to get himself a job up in, I think, Norwell, no, I'm sorry. Um, uh, Adam and Norwood. Um, so he will be, um, he's, he's been doing quite well and we're very happy to, um, that he is finally going to be able to start that. I have to point out that, um, we recently, the Historical Commission recently, um, completed production of a video on the, um, Memorial Bell Tower. And actually, it was one of our, um, commission members, Elizabeth Tings, who is, um, again, another talented member of the commission. And, um, I will be sending that link to you because it's a, it's a wonderfully informative video. So, and that's the fourth in a series of videos that the commission has produced. Um, we also notify owners of properties listed on the town's inventory, historic assets, that their property is located or included on the inventory. Last year, we sent a letter to all people in historic districts. And this year, we are going to send to the eight hundred people or so, uh, homeowners, property owners on the, um, that are not in historic district. We find, for the most part, um, that most people know. It is very rare now that somebody doesn't know that they're in an historic district. Um, sometimes that's not the case, uh, people understanding that they're on the inventory. And so that's why we send these, these notices out, um, every few years. Uh, we are also continuously improving the historic districts design review process, the documents and practices. Um, we have an ongoing, um, issue with, um, windows. And that seems to be, um, the types of windows that people want to, um, want to install versus the Secretary of the Interior's requirements. So we're working on that now. We're having a business meeting at the end of the month. And all of the members are currently doing research on other towns and other historic districts to see what their practices are. Create community preservation awareness by publishing books and producing videos on the history of Hingham. I mentioned the videos already. Um, and the Historical Commission has published a number of books. And, um, once again, we have, um, Steve Dempsey has, has published two. Um, we recently published Tranquility Grove, Martha, um, Martha Bealick Rudin, or Martha Rudin Bealick. And, um, we have in the past published Bucket Town and, two others, actually. So we sponsor the essay contest, which I mentioned. Um, and we fund eligible projects with Greenbush Historic Preservation Trust grants. And we just finished, um, this year's round of funding. And, um, we generally give out a hundred thousand dollars annually and for various projects. Some of them are, um, from, they're, they're town-related. Um, s- some are personal, um, properties, private homeowners. And this is the only source of funding for them. And so if anybody's in the, um, if, if a property is in the Greenbush right of way or in an eligible historic district that abuts the right of way, they're eligible for, for funding. We've also funded, um, projects at Glastonbury Abbey, um, the Historical Society, and a number of others. And also, um, we are now finished scanning all the documents in the town Richardson collection. Um, and so, and those are, those are available for anyone to see. Um, we have joint responsibility for those documents. I would say, um, you know, there are a couple of hundred binders that Mr. Richardson had, um, over his many years as a, you know, wetlands, um, scientist and, um, historian and just general, um, lover of Hingham, um, acquired many photographs, maps, um, articles. Uh, it, it is just remarkable what was all there. And so we've been able to scan those so that they'll be available to everybody. And, um, COVID impacts Hingham really hasn't been that, um, that devastating for us. I don't, I haven't seen a downturn in, um, applications at all for, um, historic districts review. Um, I think we've been doing a good job maintaining service levels. And, um, it's, again, as Lonnie mentioned, you know, unfortunately, we thought it would be daunting to work with, um, plans, um, pages and pages of architectural plans. Um, but it has worked out very nicely. I think, um, you know, screen sharing helps if we've got an architect who is able to do that. Um, but also each member receives a packet prior to meetings so that they have the plans right in front of them and it works out nicely. Um, one other thing I wanted to mention too, um, well, actually, and, and we make site visits at least once a month on a Saturday morning, um, prior to, um, prior to a meeting date so that we can kind of get a light up on a project so that, um, you know, maybe it'll, uh, save somebody from having to come back again. Um, but the site visits have worked out very nicely. Um, we all wear masks and, um, and everybody stays away. It's, um, it's all very productive. So the other problem, um, that I've been having since I'm kind of a woman who began, except for, and I'm very grateful for the assistance of Sherry Robertson, who is, um, um, actually in planning, but she has, um, she has taken on her responsibility of helping me with historic districts commissioned units. So, um, she's, she's very smart and a quick study, so it's been great. Um, but without a tax workup person, that's the person I counted on to do filing and recording of, um, applications that came in that are not, um, uh, scheduled for a hearing. Those would be the maintenance and repair applications that come in. And so, um, I've got a pile of those. I've got a lot of stuff to file. And, uh, so that's, that's one major impact for me. Um, and then, as I mentioned, canceling the, um, some of the events that, you know, we have every year. Um, it's me. That's it. So there you have it. Um, I would say that the major items, um, included in expenses are for the Memorial Bell Tower repair and maintenance because on an annual basis, you never know what's going to happen. They, you know, one of their heaters fails, um, they have a moisture problem, um, the dehumidifier goes down, or, um, the, um, they need ropes, ropes break, other pieces of, um, the mechanism break. And so they need to have those replaced. And that's primarily, and the cleaning of the bell tower, which takes place, I think, twice a year. Um, and then we, the other would be the assessment of our monuments and markers in town.
That's it. Andrea, thank you again. Um, really comprehensive. Uh, Bill, Bill Ramsey, questions or comments for Andrea with respect to the, uh, historical budget?
Andrea, looks like your budget is right on top of Form twenty-one, factoring down a couple hundred dollars. So wonderful. Um, Andrea, you and I have worked on a lot of projects over the years and just wanted to thank you for all that you do. You are a wonderful advocate for our history and every project I've worked on with you, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. You're a great resource. So thanks for all you do and I appreciate your presentation.
Thank you so much. Uh, Joe?
Yes, Andrea, thank you. Um, I noticed, I noticed, um, you're in the presentation or the packet we received, there's a number of gift items. And I'm wondering how do people, if they want to make a gift, uh, for historical, historic preservation, how do they go about doing that?
Oh, actually, they write a check to the, um, the Preservation Projects Fund. And that's where we receive our donations. And then I send them, of course, a thank you letter and the, um, information for their tax deduction.
Do you do, is there any mailing that goes out, any fundraising to, uh, so that people are even aware that there's a way to help support historic preservation in town?
Not as much as we'd like. Um, and we've been very fortunate that, um, you know, we've had donations over the years, but, and also the revenue from books that we publish helps to keep that Preservation Projects Fund going. But you're right, um, it would probably, uh, it would benefit us to take the time to perhaps launch some sort of a...
Um, other than that, I approve the budget. Um, absolutely fine. Thank you.
Okay. Um, uh, I've also reviewed the budget and all of the materials. And, um, Andrea, really comprehensive. And I, I appreciate the map because it, you know, we tend to sometimes think in Hingham, you know, we, we think of sort of certain historic districts. But it's, I, I always find that it's really helpful to kind of have, you know, have a, have a bird's eye view of things. And, and it, it, it kind of gives you a little bit of insight into, um, you know, kind of how the town grew. Um, the, the map, the map tells a little bit of a story. Um, is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the historical budget? Okay. Um, Andrea, thank you. I, you know, I, um, uh, one of the really nice things about these budget hearings is that we get to see, um, many of our colleagues who we haven't seen a lot of over the, over the last nine or 10 months. And, um, it is, um, it is really nice to see you. And, and, um, uh, again, um, you know, thank you for, uh, for, for everything that you do. And, uh, uh, we're, we're, we're looking forward to the time when, uh, we can gather again to celebrate Grape Island. And, um, you know, I know you and Paul Healy put a lot of time and effort into the preservation awards. And I, I think your, your reference to those being caused, um, you know, is, is a good characterization. But, um, uh, it's, it's a lot of those little things that, that we miss in this pandemic. So hopefully later this year, we can gather to, uh, to, to celebrate some of those things.
Thank you very much, Lonnie.
Okay, have a good night. Uh, next is land use and development. And it's my pleasure to welcome Emily Wentworth. And I think Emily, I, yep, there you are. Nice to see you too, Emily.
Nice to see you.
You know, we, um, depending on when people are coming and going in town halls, some people you run into a little more often, but, um, welcome. I'm going to turn this presentation over to you and then we'll open it up for questions.
Sure. Okay. Uh, so I, I believe this is the third year in a row we've presented the land use and development department, um, budget. So I'm going to kind of breeze through some of the, the trends or initiatives, um, highlights that fall into each of the four department categories, um, or their main functions. Uh, and, you know, you're welcome to read the mission statement. But, um, in terms of, you know, the first department, um, function, which is, uh, land use regulations. And this is really the, the principal function of the department, um, and administered primarily through the zoning board of appeals or ZBA. I think the first notable trend is the continued significant decrease in the number of variance applications the board has received. Um, I, I had mentioned that last year. Um, it, it was more significant this year. Um, I believe it's attributable to the fact that the board has granted, um, fewer exceptions from our otherwise effective dimensional regulations and no exceptions from the town's use regulations in recent years. Um, anecdotally, the only variance that I believe the board has granted in the last year was for, um, a three-inch incursion into a side yard setback for, uh, a residential addition. Um, so really modest relief there. The other trend, um, we've seen is a decrease in the number and complexity of comprehensive permit applications or 40B applications that the boards received. Um, they've actually only reviewed one in the last year. It was a, um, joint application from Habitat for Humanity and, um, the Affordable Housing Trust and, and sponsored by the Board of Selectmen for a two-unit development on Whiting Street. The permit was issued in September. We hope, um, construction will proceed in the, the coming months. Um, and, and that's a, a very different scale than the types of 40B developments that the board had reviewed a, a couple of years back, that, that, some of which were in the couple of hundred unit, um, range. The, um, you know, one related to 40Bs, uh, something that has been relatively time-consuming for staff over the last six months in particular, um, is ongoing litigation related to another 40B project, that Riverstone Development on Ward Street. So sometimes even after the board grants a favorable decision, um, there are certain post-permit obligations that, um, involve staff and litigation counsel, special real estate counsel, and the board's technical consultants. So, um, we're still working through that appeal. Um, that's presently in front of the Housing Appeals Committee. Um, related to affordable housing development, the staff provides some ancillary support to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, in the last year, some of the highlights include, um, a, that we heard that the town successfully applied for a one hundred and forty thousand dollar housing choice capital grant, um, that the trust will use to renovate a two-family property that they own. Um, we, uh, since we heard about that award last January, have issued an invitation to bid. Um, the trust selected the lowest bidder. It came in, you know, very close to what they anticipated budget to be. Um, and so we hope that construction work will start this month, um, which is exciting. The trust also acquired a single-family home on Central Street that, um, you know, was authorized to do by the board, uh, last spring. So, um, that, that's exciting as well. They also worked through a few other projects that are in more preliminary planning stages. Um, in terms of economic development, uh, one of the principal things we focused on is, um, more expedited permitting. So the, um, State Association of Regional Planning Agencies had highlighted Hingham as having a zoning administrator. Um, and, and since we realized that, um, the board reinstituted a practice last year, actually, um, of delegating certain of its responsibilities to the position of the zoning administrator. And the benefit for business owners, or in certain cases homeowners, is that applications are heard more quickly. So, um, uh, an application that's heard by the zoning administrator has to be heard within thirty-five days, um, compared to a hundred days for a variance by the board or ninety days from opening a, um, a hearing for a special permit in front of the board. Um, and in addition, if an appeal were to be filed, it would be heard locally. So, um, there is some benefit there. Things can keep moving, um, quickly. The, um, on the right, I don't know if you're there again, not following along with my notes. Um, the other item that the department has worked on in, um, recent months has been the restaurant reopening committee. I know you heard about that with the building commissioners' presentation. Um, but that was, you know, an excellent opportunity to really get to know some of the restaurant owners and other business owners, um, in the community and help them kind of figure out a way to keep their businesses moving during a, a really challenging time. Um, and also partner with some of our other, you know, internal staff that we don't get to work with as closely otherwise. Um, and then the final function of the department is, um, more long-range plan, planning. Um, the, the Housing Trust... Um, the, the Housing Trust, uh, had initiated a housing plan a couple of years ago that is now in its final draft form. So we hope to roll that out to the public, um, shortly. We also collaborated with four other local communities and the Regional Planning Agency, or MAPC, um, on a South Shore small housing plan that's entering final stages. And, um, we finally learned this past spring that another regional study through MAPC and Cornell, um, University, related to climate change, which, um, both this department and the Conservation Department participated in, won an award from the American Planning Association. Um, so those, those were fun projects because they involved some of our, uh, you know, our , um, local surrounding communities, uh, regional planning agencies and others. In terms of, um, metrics, we, uh, on the next slide, you know, I'll just highlight that we have fewer applications in the last year or two than we did in the prior year or two, but we're pretty much on par with where we were five years ago. We'll, we'll always see some fluctuation, but I, I think this again is related to the fact that the board has granted fewer variances. So we're just seeing fewer applications. And then the other one item I just highlighted on this page is that DHCD just recertified, um, this past July, that our subsidized housing inventory percentage is at 11.37%. Um, so, you know, Hingham continues to be above that statutory minimum that we achieved in 2017, um, which is excellent. And then, um, in terms of, you know, some of the, the, I'll just talk quickly about some of the COVID impacts that we've seen, you know, obviously like all other boards, including this one, we're conducting remote meetings. Um, one of, I, you know, part of the advantage of that is that because town hall is closed and we're conducting things from our homes, we've had to make sure that information is still available to the public. So I think, um, information applications were just, we were able to get the information to folks in a more transparent way. Everything is posted online now. Um, and we're also accepting all applications electronically. So, you know, I, this might be a trend that gets us to, uh, less paper in the office, which will be helpful. Um, there also, um, I noted earlier that we provide some support to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, there was a vacant position in the department, um, for the last several months. As a result, we weren't able to fulfill some of the financial reporting responsibilities that we had taken on a couple of years ago. And, you know, I really thank the Housing Trust Treasurer, um, and the Town Accountant for resuming those roles temporarily. Um, I'm also very pleased to announce that we were able to attract a really highly qualified candidate, um, who is expected to start at the beginning of next month. So we'll be able to take those, um, you know, those responsibilities or fulfill those responsibilities again, um, through department staff. And, um, I think those are the highlights. The, uh, department budget overall, um, is around, um, $155,000 total when you combine salaries with expenses. Um, you know, the majority of that obviously is salary. Expenses are relatively minimal and are largely tied to things that we're obligated to do under, um, the State zoning act.
Emily, thank you. Again, really, really comprehensive. And, um, I love that chart with kind of the four pieces. It, it, it helps, it helps me organize and understand all the different facets to, um, you know, to what you and your team do. Um, uh, Joe, questions or comments for Emily on the, uh, on the land use and development budget?
Uh, Emily, so thank you for a wonderful presentation. On the budget side, um, I was going to grill you over the fact that your budget is up $4 compared to last year, but I, I'm not sure it's really going to be worth going through that exercise. Now, it's real, I mean, your, your presentation is very thorough. Um, I just wanted to connect the dots, which I think were obvious to you, maybe not to others, that the reason the 40B applications are down is because we've exceeded the 10% threshold for our subsidized housing inventory. Um, it's not as if, um, people would not be filing 40B applications, uh, on their own, but they're not filing it because we've achieved the 10%. So the town has a lot more discretion in how it addresses, um, those housing projects. But we are, I understand that the zoning board is still considering 40B applications, um, and moving forward appropriately, um, based on the needs of the town and, uh, and the specific project. Um, and, you know, your work on the, on the restaurant opening group has just been outstanding, uh, as has other members. Um, that, I, it's, other than that, $4, which has been bothering me for a while. That's, that, that's it. That's, that's the only reasons I have. But that was great. Thank you.
Joe, Joe, I have a $5 bill in my wallet, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna put it on the conservation envelope train. It'll, it'll make, it'll make its way via my next week's office. Bill, uh, questions for Emily?
Emily, the only question I have for you is, did I hear you correctly that you said the zoning board has only granted one variance in the past year?
Yeah, that's, that's by default. Yep.
How many have they denied?
Yeah, um, there was one that they denied. All the others, and they have received, you know, probably a couple dozen at this point this year have been withdrawn, um, without prejudice after the board raised concerns.
On average, it's about seven or eight, maybe, right?
Oh, once upon, um, a number of years ago, I would say it was over 50. Yeah. So it's, it's a marked, um.
Change. Must be because of the changed memberships.
Yeah.
That I was, I was thinking that.
And Emily, and I know you're doing a lot for us right now. Um, you're definitely filling a lot of different roles. Um, so thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you. Um, uh, I don't have any, any questions about the budget. I, I just would point out, um, and I think people have heard it, you know, in, in, in many of the presentations tonight, you know, we tend to sometimes think about, um, you know, within the school budget, we talk about mandates and we talk about unfunded mandates. And clearly, there are a lot of those in, you know, in, in, in the education budget and in the education program. Um, a lot of our land use and permitting boards, they also have mandates or reporting requirements that have to be satisfied. Um, something has to be heard and acted on within a certain period of time. Um, you know, Lonnie mentioned web signatures. Emily, you've mentioned having, having documents available and accessible to people. And, you know, it, it's just an example that this concept of mandates or statutory requirements is, is something that is common across, um, you know, many of the town departments. And, you know, Emily, like you, I, I'm sort of hoping that there may be some, some things that we can take away from COVID that will help us going forward, that, that in, in a very small measure, um, help offset, uh, a lot of the very difficult things that, that we've all had to deal with, um, with respect to COVID. And, you know, the, potentially being able to, um, you know, have a lot of documents electronically and things probably makes life a little easier, um, better for the environment. Um, you know, the other thing I would just add is, um, you know, you mentioned about, about, uh, your new position, and we're so glad that you filled that. One of the things that Tom and I talked about, to the extent it would be helpful, is if the report, if the financial reporting for the Affordable Housing Trust, if it would be helpful to engage, you know, whether it's the town accountants or an accounting firm to sort of set up some of that reporting, um, we are prepared to do that and we are prepared to expend the money to do that. I know there have been questions over the, over the past year or so about, um, how that information should be, should be documented. It's, it's important to capture. And, you know, rather than sort of have somebody, you know, I think everybody kind of has a system. And the Affordable Housing Trust, we've been so lucky to have a member of the trust who has, who has done a lot of that important work. Um, as we move forward, if it would help you and help your new team member to engage, you know, engage an accounting firm and just kind of getting it set up and say, for the amount of money that we're talking about, this is, you know, this is the reporting that should be in place. Um, it just might make everybody's life easier. So, you know, I, you know, if you could think about that, if that feels like it's a good idea to you, um, if you could please let Tom and Michelle know, I think it would be money well spent.
I, I agree. I, it certainly would help, um, this new employee at the ground running.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think sometimes coming up with a reporting system versus maintaining a system that's been set up are two very different things. And, and I hate for somebody to kind of spin their wheels when they're getting acclimated to a new job. Um, and, and I also just think that, um, you know, that there, there's been a lot of discussion again about what the, what the reporting should look like. Let's ask the CPA. They, I think, I think they're, they're the best able to answer that question. Um, any questions from the public with respect to land use and development budget? Okay, seeing none. Emily, thank you again very much for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.
You too.
Take care. Uh, next we have the South Shore Country Club, and it looks to me as if we have, um, the Director of the Country Club, Kevin Wayland. I see members of the Country Club Committee, Christine Smith. I see Bill Fred, Steve White. I thought I saw Sue Sullivan. Um, I'm just going to ask before I turn it over to Kevin, Christine, is your committee posted for this meeting?
We're not posted for the meeting, but people are interested, so they won't be commenting.
Yeah. So that's fine. I just, I just wanted to ask for procedure, just so that I know. I don't, I don't want to invite people to engage if, if that would be an open meeting violation. So, um, I think what we'll do is we'll turn it over to Kevin. Um, and, uh, you know, Christine as chair, if there are any additional comments you want to make, uh, that would be fine. Kevin, welcome and take it away.
Thank you. Um, I, I present this budget tonight with the Country Club Management Committee. As everyone knows, the South Shore Country Club operates as an enterprise account, which means that any revenues, that any expenditures that we spend, we have to raise, we, you know, raise the revenues through fees at the country club. So the budget that I'm presenting tonight is projecting revenues of $1,986,000 and expenditures of $1,889,280. I just want to kind of give you the overview on that. The, the budget is really developed based on things returning to normal, um, as we currently have, uh, currently with COVID, we are not operating with the, um, bowling alley, the simulators, and obviously the, uh, restaurant as well is not really fully functioning as well as far as revenue is concerned. So, but that's where we're coming from. So we have a, a budget that will be cash, cash positive, um, and we look forward to returning to normal. As we all know, the South Shore Country Club is a full-service municipal country club offering a variety of recreational opportunities, everything from a championship 18-hole golf course. And again, this year, we'll be hosting another amateur qualifier with Mass Golf Association. Last year, we were able to host the Women's Senior Amateur Championship at the Country Club, which was a great success. So we have a driving range, uh, we have PGA Tour golf simulators, the Pro Shop, outdoor pool, well, not the pool right now, hopefully in a few years we'll have a pool, tennis courts, the bowling alley. We have the dining, private functions, professional lessons and youth programs. And we offer all these through our own employees or with our partners. Go to the next slide. So one of the things about the matrix we're looking at, I talked to Michelle about this previously, is that this year was really an anomaly. So the, even the rounds of golf is a very good matrix for us to go by in the future and in the past. But this year was really challenging for one that we didn't have, um, you know, any golf in the month of, um, April and the first week and a half of May. And then when we were able to get open, we really were restricted to 15-minute tee times for a good month, month and a half, and then 12 minutes the rest of the summer. So the rounds were, were down significantly and it wouldn't be a good judge, although I will say that the tee sheet did not have an open space all season. I mean, really, we were just really slammed as far as, you know, every, every tee time was taken and it was difficult to get on the course, um, which is, is good news. So the key initiative in my budget this year was the reduction in seasonal staffing. I think one of the things that we have done is kind of, um, with COVID, we really kind of looked at how we operate the business and it really restricted us as far as bringing people on board, because we couldn't really bring on the normal amount of staffing that we've had in the past for safety reasons and things of that nature. Um, and operational, it just was not conducive to bring in the, the normal staff that we had. So we're going to bring some of those, uh, you know, reductions and bring them forward into this, this seasonal budget, this budget as well. So our seasonal staffing will be down this year. Um, we have two, two huge projects going on, and we're meeting with designers tomorrow. Uh, we've met them already, but we have the pool design is, is in progress and also the turf care center, uh, is in progress as well. So those two projects are going on. And as well, what we're doing is, is the master plan for the facility. We're going to have several needs in the future. For instance, we're going to need a cot barn for, uh, when eventually that will go to electric carts. Um, so, you know, we're going to plan out where that is going to go in the future. So it will be kind of plug and place and it'll be already planned in the whole scheme of what's going on at the country club. Um, in this budget, and one of the reasons why we have an increase, uh, in the, in the bottom line of the request from last year, is we're replacing the bowling alley roof out of our budget. And one of the reasons why we're doing it out of our budget rather than doing capital is one, we do have, uh, the turf care center is going to be coming online from a, um, from a bonding issue will be put out to bond and then we'll be, have to pay that bond back. Next year in this budget is really the last year before that will come online. So what we're trying to do is take care of some of those capital items that we need to take care of and, um, also not have any more debt in the out years. So we're, we're putting, uh, bowling alley roof, also purchasing some maintenance equipment, um, a few blowers that blow leaves, they're a large piece of equipment, and then some, uh, additional rollers and things for the greens. The other thing that we're doing here is the irrigation system improvements. So when we move into the new building, we're going to have a cloud-based system, which means that we'll, we'll be able to manage the irrigation system remotely. Um, and that will save a lot of time from a personnel standpoint. Currently, a golf superintendent has to drive from Rochfield up to Hingham. Um, and, you know, our, and it's just not an efficient, um, efficient process right now. So the irrigation system improvements will allow him to do that remotely from home. So it's one thing that'll make it a lot more efficient, will use less water, and also at the same time, it will make it, uh, more efficient from a employee standpoint, employee standpoint. The final thing is what we've done is a reduction in banking services too, that you'll notice in the budget. Um, although this is a small reduction, um, one of the things that we did do is that we passed along that when people are paying their, um, golf permit, if you paid with a credit card, then you would pay the 3% fee. So, um, that is going to save approximately 12 grand over the season. It's about 50% of what we would normally pay for our banking service fees. And, um, you know, so people have been paying with a check. It's been quite successful so far. So the, the COVID impacts, where the golf permit holdarounds were up about 20%, I think, um, you know, when we hear any complaints from our golf perm, golf permit holders, they, they talk, you know, the complaints, but then they said, I've never played so much golf before. Um, so we've had a significant amount of, uh, significant increase in our golf permit holders, which gives us a little opportunity to, uh, you know, make some maneuvers that are in what we offer as far as that golf permit holder. So, uh, golf permits for the public. So we've gone up on our rates this year, 10% for any new members, uh, which has allowed us to increase our rate of about $400 overall per permit this year. So we'll have additional revenue this year. Golf revenue is up from 2020 to, when you compare 20 to 21, even without having, you know, the bowling or the camps, the restaurant simulators. So both that revenue is down, but the golf revenue has made it up. So we're at over 100% of where we were, um, last year. Now, some of that might tail off because of, uh, we are getting close to where we're not going to be able to take, um, additional permits, but, um, you know, we're, we're in very good shape, I think, going forward for this fiscal year. And I'm, I'm very much looking forward to having a very, a cash positive, uh, fiscal year. Seasonal personal expenses have been reduced due to, uh, operational changes for COVID-19 and, uh, we'll continue those. I think, you know, we saw some of the efficiencies and we'll be able to carry those over to this fiscal year as well. We have, we have 10 full-time per- We have, we have ten full-time personnel, and, and then we have twenty part-time and seasonal personnel throughout the year. Our major expenses are $229,000 for, um, maintenance of buildings and equipment. And then there's a hundred fifty thousand, seven thousand dollars for golf course treatments, which is the applications and things of that nature that we do throughout the year. Um, this past fiscal year, it was, uh, we had to do a little bit more seeding and things and overseeding due to the drought. Um, so there were several, uh, fairways and things of that nature that normally we wouldn't have to oversee. So we did have, we did spend a little bit more money this past, this current fiscal year than we normally would. But it's, um, you know, always just to ensure that we keep the course in, you know, championship shape. We have $78,000 for utilities, and then $70,000 for Pro Shop merchandise, and then the increase there in the irrigation line item to forty-five thousand to, uh, include for the cloud-based, uh, irrigation system.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, I would, I would just note for members of the public, and this information is on the website, um, what Kevin has listed here are the major expenses for the South Shore Country Club. However, there is a very detailed seven-page budget that is broken up by each of the, you know, each of the activities that's located in the budget book, um, which I think just, you know, speaks to Kevin. You and the committee, um, you know, you, you run this, you run this like a business. And, um, sometimes in doing that, you've had to make some, some tough decisions, especially with COVID. Um, I, I appreciate the approach that you take, both short-term and long-term, and, um, in, in particular, being opportunistic, uh, with some capital improvements that could be made this year. I think, I think that's going to pay dividends down the road as those bigger projects come online. Um, I just, uh, this is a very well-run operation. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's very well-run. Um, Bill, do you have questions or comments for Kevin with respect to the budget?
Kevin, the fact that the revenue is at one hundred percent for twenty-one is just, is great to see that. And, um, very thankful for the mild fall winter we had, and we had people golfing, I think, into late November, early December. I think that really, really was a huge benefit for the, the country club and for your revenue, um, which was great to see. So where, other areas you had to kind of pull back, pull back on, the bowling and some other areas to golf really delivered big, which, which was great. One, one question, Kevin, as you mentioned, um, the turf care center project. What, what is that again?
So that's the maintenance building, Bill. So we have, the two projects we have going on right now, or the, or the design that we have going on is that we, we're, uh, authorized to spend $2.2 million and bond $2.2 million last, uh, town meeting. And so that means what we're going to be doing is building a maintenance building over to the west side of the property, um, where the storage containers are currently. We're, we'll be building approximately a ten to eleven thousand square foot, uh, maintenance facility. Currently, the maintenance facility is under the pole. There is some spalling of the concrete in that building. So it's a safety issue. So last year, we, we allotted $2.2 million, is what we feel we could expend out. We plan to do the design, a full build-out on the design, and then see what we can afford and see what the cost estimates come in as far as what we can afford with that two-point-two, and go out to bid on that for that, the remainder of the two-point-two million dollars. So we're hoping, but, you know, obviously the main focus will be this, to get the, the folks out of the maintenance building, uh, in the, in the shop, and into a new shop, so we don't have any safety issues.
Okay, I got the, the building project. I didn't realize you were calling it that, so thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, Cheryl, questions for Kevin?
Yeah, Kevin, and really for the, for the group, um, it's not easy managing this during COVID times. Um, and that huts off, it's really, it's really quite impressive, uh, what, what you guys have done. And the fact that, you know, no tee times were available really indicates how valuable a town residents view this, uh, as an asset for the town. Um, on the budget, so I, I, so I see the item for R and M irrigation, which went from twenty thousand to forty-five thousand.
Yes.
Is that going to be an ongoing, um, that forty-five thousand an ongoing basis?
No, it's a one-time expense, uh, Joe, to build, to, uh, upgrade the system. And once we get into the new building, to upgrade the current irrigation system. So it is some, something that is, uh, able to be, uh, remotely controlled. Um, you know, and just have better controls on it from, you know, computerization and things of that nature.
Um, so on the R and M equipment line, we're not also more than doubled from thirty to seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Right, so we have this, this four pieces of equipment that we would purchase. Um, and I went through the, the capital equipment, um, the capital committee as well on this. The two, this two piece, two pieces of equipment would be like the big blowers, they, they're like leaf blowers, they're huge. Well, then, um, then the other two items would be like rollers for, uh, greens and things of that nature. We did do a purchase of about, uh, four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars last fiscal year. Um, we're paying that off, and this is kind of one more, kind of keeping us on schedule. Um, in this, like, again, one of the things is I wanted to build all this into the budget this year, because this is a, potentially the, the last bite of the apple for a while for us to be able to purchase this. Now, one of the things I will do, um, is to ensure that, uh, revenues are on track before I do any of these big spend options or projects. So you want to make sure that we're going to be cash positive for next fiscal year. And what we would do is, you know, basically hold off on purchasing any of this equipment, um, or doing the roof or anything of that nature as long as possible, and, uh, ensure that we do have the funding.
Uh, thank you. I mean, it's, it, again, as I said, it's, it's quite impressive, um, how this has been managed. So thank you. So other questions?
Um, Kevin, I just have one, one question, and, um, just kind of big picture. But in, in looking through the budget detail, um, I noticed that it's page, I, I have it as page two eighty-seven in my budget book, but it's the simulator budget. And, you know, what I, what I've just noticed is that, is that over kind of the four years, that, that, the numbers, the numbers seem to, to move sort of in bigger amounts in different directions than other parts of the budget. And kind of without going through line by line, I'm just wondering kind of in general, kind of where are you with simulators and, and what are you looking for for twenty-two? I know there have been purchases of simulators, I just, that those numbers seem to move around more than others.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, the simulator business last year was fairly strong. The year before, we had a, uh, a pretty good bump. And one of the things that was, it's kind of interesting, and, you know, it was actually because of the government shutdown for three or four weeks in January and over the holidays. We had a lot of government employees actually coming in, and actually we had like, the IRS group was there three or four times. So we had, you know, a lot of, uh, unexpected revenue from that, because we actually had a lot of simulator play during the day. I mean, generally speaking, the simulators are busy at night and on weekends when people are off of work. And that year was kind of a little bit of a spike because of that. I mean, one of the things I think that you can look at, you know, over time is that the revenue from the golf course and all the different, uh, you know, revenue streams that we do have is pretty, is pretty stable. And it seems like when one goes up, another one goes down. So one of the things like you look at last year, for instance, from the, from the, when the, um, when the revenue from the simulators was down, we had a very mild winter. So what ends up happening is if I have a sixty-five degree day in February, a member who might be going to pay forty-five dollars an hour to play in the simulator with his friends is now saying, hey, I'm just going to go out because I already paid to go off outside. So you have that, you know, it's weather dependent. Um, there's a whole bunch of different variables in that equation, but I think, you know, for the most part, I think overall, it's like, like I said, if, if one goes down, the other one will go up.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's a helpful way to look at it. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks, Mary, too, to my staff. Uh, Jake Silver does a great job. He's the golf course superintendent, Chris Riley, uh, the golf professional as well. Um, I couldn't do it without them. They're, that's, uh, both, uh, you know, such, uh, great professionals in, in their side of the, uh, you know, their side of the business. So they do a great job for me.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, we can't talk about the country club without talking about the Greenside Grill, and Frank and Ilio, um, have been great partners with the town. And, um, we, uh, um, we, we know in particular that the next couple of months are going to be challenging. Um, we're, we're glad that there were, there were other kind of federal assistance programs that they as a restaurant might, you know, have access to some funding that would sort of, that would help them out. Um, I would remind people that the Greenside Grill is open Tuesday through Sunday. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yep, and for, for takeout and family style meals and...
Wednes, Wednesday through Sunday.
Wednesday through Sunday, thank you.
Wednesday through Sunday, yeah. And, you know, they, they do a great job, and we're looking forward to, um, you know, having the campers back, having SNAP back up there this summer. Um, hopefully we can, uh, you know, begin with everyone getting vaccinated to put, you know, get back to a somewhat normal, um, you know, life or activities. And we're looking forward to be part of that, you know, when this, the South Shore Country Club is looking to be part of that.
Absolutely. Um, before I put it up, two questions for the public. I just want to ask Christine Smith as chair of the country club committee. I, I didn't know if on behalf of the committee, Christine, you had anything to add? No? Okay, Mary? Look, there you go. Now I can hear you. It's very faint.
No, I'll think, I'll, I'll be very brief. I just, um, as you can see, I'm so proud of, uh, of what we've created at the country club. It's a, it's a town asset that we've owned for a long time, and we're starting to, uh, really, I think, reinvest, um, in that asset. And I, I couldn't be happier with our staff, um, country club management committee, and the, and the support of the town has been, um, has been terrific. And it's actually been sort of a, a COVID-friendly activity, uh, that generates revenue for the town. So, who knew? Um, so thank you.
Excellent. And, and thank you to the members of the committee, both those in attendance and, and those who are not. The, the committee, the committee plays a very important hands-on role, um, in, in, with this, with this important asset. Um, is there anyone in the public who has a question or wishes to make a comment with respect to the country club budget?
Mary, do you mind if I jump in for real quick?
Please.
I just wanted to, uh, to address something that Sleppin' Ramsey mentioned. That, uh, just so everyone knows, Kevin, I believe people are still walking out on that course and, uh, playing for rounds. People are still playing. So it's, uh, you know, it's the one thing people can do. We actually had a few people out there today. So it's, um, you know, people are still playing, and, uh, gotta love golfers. Usually, usually if it was below fifty-five in the old days, it was like people would not come out. But now it's, uh, if it's not, you know, below thirty-five, so it's, uh, people have been getting out and, um, you know, and playing. So, you know, revenue's been strong. And the one thing is we've had a lot of, uh, very strong activity with our golf permits, um, so far this year. You know, we've, we're having a very strong month. Uh, there's a deadline for members that were last year to get the ten percent discount, um, that ends on February first. So that's been a, a really good, um, way of getting them to pay early.
Great. Knock on wood. Let's hope it continues.
Yep, absolutely.
Excellent. Um, Kevin, Christine, and other members of the committee, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, so I've been waiting nine years to introduce the next budget. Because for the first time in Kingham's history, we are going to be reviewing the budget for our water system. And, um, that's a, that's a really big deal. And it is my pleasure to introduce our superintendent of the Weir River Water System, Russell Tierney. Um, Russ is going to walk through the budget, and then we'll open it up for questions. Uh, good evening, Russ. Welcome.
Good evening. Sorry, I was trying to clean up my golf stuff. Kevin got me all excited. I'm going to have to throw up. You're a little dusty, but I might have to do that. I'll find some time during the day sometime. No, just kidding.
There's one, there's one game break over at the...
Yeah, right. You don't want to hear that either, believe me. Um, so, uh, bear with me, it's my first time doing this, but, uh, you know, the mission and service of the, uh, newly formed Weir River Water System would be to provide outstanding customer service to our valued customers in the Kingham Hollow North Quarter asset while continuously supplying high-quality water while improving the water system infrastructure. I know that's a lot, um, it's a big thing that we're going to take on, but, um, I believe with, you know, all the help we have and everybody working hard, we're going to make this a reality, which we already have. Um, you know, to date of dating, we have water treatment, distribution, ONM services, filling services, twenty-four-seven customer service, emergency repairs, capital improvements, public outreach and conservation. Benchmarking metrics, uh, Weir River Water System, ONM staff performs annually. Uh, we treat over, treat and distribute over 1.2 billion gallons of water, maintain over a hundred and ninety miles of water main, maintain ten water sources including Accra Pond, nine hundred and seventeen fire hydrant inspection and maintenance, ten plus five hydrant and five gate valve replacements per year, um, three hundred and ten system gate valve inspections and operation, prospect and control program administration, capital planning and execution, system-wide leak detection, bi-annual system-wide flushing program, which, um, we are really putting a push on for, uh, in the, in the spring. After, uh, some flow testing we did the other day and all the complaints we got for water, uh, discoloration, it's really key that we get this thing up and running. Uh, we gotta get that everything cleaned out and, uh, media calibration replacement. That's a short overview of what we do. Um, there's a lot more to it, but those are the highlights. Key initiatives for, uh, the rest of this year and the next year. Uh, master plan studying implementation. So we, uh, do have the master plan completed just before the end of this fiscal year, and we're going to implement it starting in February twenty-two. We're going to continue with our water main replacement program. We have, uh, capable water main being designed right now, and we have a lot, really large job down in Hallow. They're going to redo all of our, why can't I remember the name, while I'm sitting Atlantic Avenue. Um, so the town of Hallow is going to redo reclaim all of Atlantic Avenue. So we have a really big water main replacement job for there. Uh, hydraulic model calibration, GIS improvements. This is going to be a big thing, and, uh, I'm glad we're getting the GIS personnel on board as soon as we can, because the water system has a very good base GIS system, but it needs a lot of work. Uh, we need to, uh, you know, re-identify the highest gate valves for the GIS. I want to eventually get it, you know, laid over onto the town's GIS as a, as a, as a middle layer. Um, I know the fight of how they had to put the hydrants in there, but when you look at them, they're, they're not placed in, you know, very well. And I think it's more of the accuracy of the GIS equipment that was used when it was first done. So that's something we're going to work on over the next few years to get it, you know, perfect. Uh, new water storage tank siding and design. Uh, we've already put the contract together for the actual siding. So the next step would be after we decided to get it designed. Source water evaluation and report. Um, right now, we are, uh, in the process of cleaning, uh, four wells and maybe six before the spring. But then we want to evaluate those wells and see if we need the additional sources or if we have to replace any of those existing sources. Accra Pond intake replacement. Um, I, I did put it in for our Y twenty-two, but it may have to get it done in twenty-one, depending on, you know, how much money we've got, the capital money, but that's definitely going to be replaced. The water treatment plant filter redevelopment work should start in the spring. Uh, we're going to do a distribution system analysis and overall maintenance analysis. Uh, once the GIS, I mean, the hydro model is completed, we're going to work a little bit more on that. The cost of service studies are ongoing, will be completed, and, uh, we're going to use that to move forward on how we're set up for filling and things like that. And then we got a water treatment plant evaluation. COVID-19 impacts. Um, the staff is more aware of their surroundings. Um, I, I thought this was strange when I first wrote it, then I thought about it. And if you walk on the street, you know, I know we're looking at, you know, are we, how far away from people, social distancing, things like that. But I think it's made them more aware of all this surrounding. Like, they see what they, they hear what they, and they're more aware of what's going on. Um, the employees who are classified as essential, so their jobs secure, which is a positive impact. Focus planning of the work to ensure safety. You know, not only with the masks and trying to stay, uh, working every day with people around you, because most of these jobs can't be done alone, but you're also looking at safety hazard. So they're trying to start to focus more on how the planning and safety. Time management skills have improved, utilizing time on site wisely in case there's a need for, uh, for shutdown, and publicly, they're moved to a more electronic process. Um, I, it was my first, uh, this last bid we just did, Buell Road. That was my first time with the electronic bidding process. It was a really, how you found out the bid results three minutes after they were turned in. Um, I think it's a great process, and it has been moved in because of COVID. I think it'll stay that way. I think, uh, hopefully the states will allow it to stay that way. Um, negative impact, impacts, interaction with residents. So, um, we do the Weir River Water System. I know a lot of the guys that we hired, uh, you know, Bruce Juarez, know everybody. I've been trying to, you know, meet people. It's been a little tough with the COVID, but, uh... I've been trying to, you know, meet people, it's been a little tough with the COVID, but I'm doing the best I can right now. Face-to-face meetings are significantly reduced. Water system activities require a lot of face-to-face meetings. You know, I know we're all on Zoom, or we love Zoom sometimes, but the face-to-face with the water system is very key and, you know, we'll get back to it. Collection of past dues is up a little bit, due to, you know, residents ability to pay their bills, so I'm sure that we can get better. The biggest negative impact is the fear of school is not performing our essential work and others not following protocol. I know our process depends, it is getting better. But there's a lot to do out there when you have a water main break, there's probably eight to ten people involved between detail contractors, everybody that's around you. I've been going through most of the water main breaks because I wanna make sure we're all paying attention to what's going on around us. You know, you lose these employees, it's gonna be, it'll be a big task to keep things running. So, hopefully everybody started to, you know, started to really realize the impact it can have on a few people concerned. And then the worst, what if, what if we lose two people, what if we lose six people? So, that puts a lot of pressure on the management staff and myself to make sure we're prepared if things start to happen. Personnel, one full-time water superintendent, one part-time administrative assistant, one seasonal inspector. In contract operations, we have SUEZ, they have three management supervisors oversight, five employees in the trip plant, in maintenance of the trip plant, and five employees in the distribution. Budgets and salaries, salary, right, two fifty-three-six seventy-six. Contract services are four ninety-three-five eighty-seven. Property tax insurance for nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars, six hundred, which Lonnie pointed out, which was really great because she's right, there's a lot of land associated with the water company. I was surprised that her and I were working on an Accra Pond thing. And even the size of just the Accra Pond area is just excellent and I'm gonna commit to her and I'm gonna look at cleaning these places up and make them look as well as everything she has in town, so that's my commitment to Lonnie, so. I think these places could be cleaned up, they look really nice and, you know, that people can walk around them and we can be proud of the areas, yeah. Other expenses, six thirteen three hundred. That's doing a few things like, you know, keep it up with the repairs of some of the old infrastructure as we try to replace things and replacing some more additional fire hydrants. And we have a contract and some gate valves. I think we're gonna spend a little more on gate valve work than anticipated at first, but, you know, we can definitely handle that. And our debt services are five point seven.
Great. Russ, thank you, and again, for members of the public and our advisory colleagues, the more detailed version of Russ's budget is available online and contained in budget books. Joe, questions for Russ about the...
May I say one more thing?
Please.
I'm sorry, because this is my first year, but everyone should know that this is an enterprise fund also, just like the golf course. So, we operate on, we take out the money that we make on water sales and we put it back in the system, so it is an enterprise fund.
Yeah, and I would just add to Russ's comment, we actually, a cost-of-service study is going on right now, which will, which will drive the FY twenty-one rates. And again, this was consistent with what we told town meeting was a potential rate increase every three years. This is, this is the third year. The budget that Russ has put together would be supported by a ten percent rate increase and there would be a surplus, which would stay within the enterprise fund as retained earnings to be available for additional capital, unexpected items. So, I would just say to my colleagues, Russ's budget is very consistent with the ten-year projections that were the basis for the financing and everything that we've done. It's gone up about, it's gone up a little less than two hundred thousand dollars because, as he said, the additional maintenance and parts and that's turning out to be a little bit more than we expected. But it's still, this is gonna generate a profit of about one point eight million dollars for next year. Joe, questions for Russ?
Well, you just answered my first question, which is whether this is consistent with our projections and it sounds like it is. Russ, can you just talk a little bit more about billing and collections? And particularly, I've gotten questions, when will we be able to convert to the online billing? You should be able to log on to, you know, Aquarian and do your billing that way.
That will be, that will be once we, in April. So, it has been pushed out a few months due to some data transfer issues and normalizing the data. This is a, I've been through a few data transitions before in my career and this thing's three times the size of anyone I've ever done. So, we're taking about fourteen thousand accounts and we're trying to push it into a data transfer. There was, like I said, there was some issue with normalization, but again, sometime in April, we're gonna make the transfer over to SUEZ billing. So, I would assume, you know, no later than June, I think, you know, I would say to be available right away, but I don't wanna say that.
No, 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 no.
I'm gonna say June, I'm gonna say June would be my, you know, for online. And I agree with you, Joe, I've been in that a long time. And it's a great way for people to pay their bill and I like that way to pay their bill, but we'll get to it hopefully later.
And I don't know if this is related or not, but communications coming from the Weir River Water System. So, when I get a call that there's a water main break, it says, this is the Aquarian Water Company. And I get an email about, you know, water conservation saying it's Aquarian Water Company. When does that transition over so it says it's coming from the Weir River Water System?
It will definitely be in April when we transfer over. I believe it's one of the things that sticks in my head all the time. I yelled at Tom about it the other day just because I was thinking to him. It's a robotic change, they can't make one change, it'll change everything. So, we're looking at same timeframe right around April. The good thing about SUEZ's system compared to Aquarians is you don't have to sign up for SUEZ's system. They're gonna take the actual data from the billing system and have the ability to use that to make our calls and things like that. But I also ask them to look at potential by adding additional numbers to an address. So, that way then you can send it to everybody, the family and things like that. You know, I don't like to say it, you gotta believe me. I figure it's the least of my worries, yeah.
Oh, it is. Do you have any sort of measure of customer satisfaction? I don't know if it's complaints or compliments or how that's measured and how you're doing. How does the public perceive your doing?
I do, I'm gonna say we're probably fifty-fifty. The problem is that sometimes we get stuck in a loop between the two companies and people are looked around at at times. They all have, that's why we actually put my number on the website. I can tell you that very rarely is it used, I may get one or two calls a day, which is not a lot because I feel like the call log for the Weir River Water System is a lot. But I get one or two a day where people have, you know, getting frustrated, so I actually just take care of it myself by passing off, we need to go to... I always include that person's email address if they allow me to, I ask them for it. That way they know that I pass it to someone to take care of them. Like I said, it can get very frustrating, but I can say the complaints are few and far between. But maybe some people aren't complaining just because they don't have the average complaint. So, the committee that I just, we just brought on board, the, we are helping with...
The Customer Advisory Board?
Yeah, Customer Advisory Board, I apologize. They've been really good so far, the three that we pointed in, you know, that are great so far. I got conversations with them very, you know, maybe once a week I send them something, they're really good about it. But they are watching their own Facebook page and things like that and they bring those things to me so that... And they also have backed us up a few times already, so it's gonna be, the management is very good, in my opinion. It's gonna help a lot as we transition, you know, continue to transition.
One question on the budget and you may have cut it, so I'm not sure. So, it's item number fifty-two hundred, which is listed as simply expenses. Last year, that was a little under half a million and this year, that's zero. Was that transferred to another category or what?
No, that expenses is the transition cost.
Oh, oh, okay, then, so that makes sense. That's all I got, thank you again.
Thank you, Joe.
Bill, questions for Russ?
Ross, you're up, a great start, appreciate what you're doing. I think a lot of the probably success you're having is because of your responsiveness to customers' questions and needs, so thank you for doing that. I have no questions on the budget, I'm Mary kind of answering my questions with where we are in terms of projections. And yeah, and Joe brought it up as well, but, you know, there was a hydrant flush and the robocalls that people got said they were from Aquarian, so. I mean, I got them myself, so good to hear we're transitioning over and thanks for addressing that.
Yeah, and, you know, I would just point out that, you know, one of the things in a well-run water system, you flush your system, you know, twice a year and you do it, you know, you do it sort of from the hub out. And our water system really hasn't, haven't been flushed in six years prior to the town taking ownership. So, you know, some of the things that are happening here are not unexpected. And I would also say that with proper maintenance and regular flushing, the impact and the degree of things like discolored water will be minimized. And then, you know, certainly the investment in capital will assist with that as well.
Good, we will absolutely be flushing in March or April, there's no doubt in my mind. How we actually do it may change because of hydraulic model and things like that and not having a unidirectional flushing program in place, but we will do some flushing, like Lee even had, or talked about it. We'll absolutely do some type of flushing this year. So, I just want to want everybody right after, but it's gonna get a little bit earlier before it gets bad, but that's just being truthful. And the best thing is we're gonna work forward to make sure that, you know, that be difficult after, you know, a year or so of doing all this.
Yeah. And Russ, I think the only other thing that I would, I would just point out on the page that you have up, you know, that the two biggest expenses that we have in running this water system are, you know, the debt service on the purchase, which will, you know, which will go away after thirty years. And that's at an interest rate of two point one four five percent. So, you know, I wish my mortgage was at two point one four five percent. And then the other piece is the contract services and those are the costs for SUEZ. So, where Russ has up above the contract operations, those are the costs as well as, as well as some other things. I would just also let Bill and Joe know that we just heard from the Town of Hull that last night their select board voted recommendations for the two Hull representatives for the Customer Advisory Board. So, a vote will be, that is actually on our list, on our agenda for Tuesday, to vote those individuals. And we've been in touch with Cohasset, so as soon as we hear, we will be able to seat that six persons. So, it'll provide additional resources to Russ.
That's great.
So, anyone have any questions about the Weir River Water System budget? Hey, Russ, before you leave, I got something for you.
Kind of do a poppy like that, yeah, I got it.
What? What? You got it? You got it?
I'll be watching, Mary, don't you worry, I'll be watching.
On a serious note, Russ, you know, we were so delighted that you were willing to come and be our first water superintendent. And, you know, you hit the ground running, you've been, you've been working to develop, to develop relationships in lots of different places. Your ability and your commitment to the town and the water system and to all of the ratepayers is just very evident. And I can't think of, you know, this water system can't be, you know, is in gray hands. And I'm just, we're just so grateful for the very big impact you've had in, you know, in like six months. You know, we thought that municipal ownership of this water system would benefit the ratepayers and you're helping make sure that happens, so, you know, thank you. And I also know that you will be back. I believe we may have to vote the Enterprise Fund budget by March first. So, we may, we may need to have you come back either here or in a water commissioner meeting. And at that point, we will need to have an estimate of the rates, so, you know, that's something that, that's a rule in regulation. Russ, one other thing, if you could, you know, you've given, and Bill, Joe and I received the monthly report from SUEZ that they've put together, which is terrific, and you've worked with them on that. Is that up on the website yet?
It will be tomorrow, I just got the evidence today, but it'll actually be on the website tomorrow. Going forward, every month it'll be on the website. And I do have to meet tomorrow to make sure we get that a little more timely than it's been getting here. But, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on and a lot of things are moving every day, so.
Yeah.
I was timing it a little bit earlier so we can get a look at it, so I'll make sure.
Yeah, I just think that that's gonna be a very helpful public resource and...
Absolutely.
I would also just ask that we make sure that Tom's counterparts in Cohasset and Hull are made aware of that that report is there because they may, I think they would find it helpful to look at.
I agree and like I said, I was working on getting, you know, as perfect as I want it and it ain't there yet, but it'll be perfect soon, I guess. But we'll get it, I'll get this one with them tomorrow. I'll send it right over to both Town Halls just so they have it.
Yeah, I think it's ready for prime time.
Agreed, no, no, I agree.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the Weir River Water System budget? Okay, our next budget is public safety utilities. Tom, is that you or is that Russ?
And that one should be Michelle Montsegar.
Okay, Michelle Montsegar.
All right, thank you. So, this budget has three components. The first is the flat fee that we budget to pay for water used in fire hydrants. This is something that, because there's no meters on fire hydrants, anytime the fire department needs to use something for, use water for a fire, we're billed for this fee quarterly. The second is ten thousand dollars that we budget for emergency repair hydrants. Chief Murphy explained that this is when a hydrant may be destroyed, you know, by a car crash or something and isn't reported. So, we're able to use this money to do that repair. And then the third piece of this is a fee charged by HMLP for about the twenty-three hundred street lights in town and that is holding steady from last year.
Okay, Bill or Joe, any questions for Michelle? The public safety utilities budget request for next year is five hundred and nineteen thousand sixty dollars, which is about a seven thousand sixty-five hundred dollar increase.
Michelle, might I correct that just as Hingham has this water service fee, the flat fee, that the other towns also assess the fee?
I assume they do, I think Russell answered that one.
Yes.
It's please, it's please tell me the number of fire hydrants in the system.
Yep. Got it, that's all I have, thank you, Michelle, that was terrible.
Joe, Joe, any, I mean, Joe, any questions? The other Joe.
It shows up in the minutes that week, too.
It's really been a long week. Okay, thank you. The community planning budget.
That one will be me, Mary.
Okay.
And so I'll start this off, as you all know, our community planning director, a longtime community planning director, Mary Savage Dunham, resigned her post from the town back in the, at the beginning of January, so a couple of weeks ago, to pursue other endeavors. And as a result, I will be presenting the community planning budget this year, so be gentle.
This is our chance, Tom.
This is your chance, Joe.
That's right.
Okay. So, and I'll do my best not to read the slides to you, but, you know, the big, the big action that the planning department is undertaking this year, among a million other things, is the, we'll be undertaking next year is the wrapping up of the master plan. That's been a huge process for the last year-plus for the town and the planning department in particular. In addition to master planning efforts, you're looking at, you know, the department is responsible for a local authority as the local authority for the subdivision control act, drafting and submitting zoning amendments and serving as the special permit granting authority, et cetera. So, there's a lot of, a lot of responsibilities that fall. et cetera. So there's a lot of, a lot of responsibilities that fall on that, on the planning department, the community planning department. So moving forward to the next slide, we have, this slide is more our day-to-day, the day-to-day efforts of the planning department. So, you know, assisting customers with the development process, and, you know, throughout from pre-application right through to post-application, things like performing plan review and coordinating project reviews, right down through meeting preparation, you know, providing customer service and response to public inquiries or chapters on a regular basis. And of course, grant writing. There's a lot of grant opportunities for this department. Mary was a prolific grant writer. We've received a lot of external money into Hingham on behalf or through her efforts, which are obviously much appreciated. Some key initiatives, obviously, again, the master plan, this is a project that really can't be overstated its importance for the town. It will help in part drive our efforts that, as we grow the town, townwide, but also obviously through South Hingham as well. You know, some of the other important, important planning efforts that are taking place, I feel, warrant listing. And so coordinating and assisting with special studies or plans, including the downtown and harbor sustainable visioning effort, the climate action plan, scoping task force, which Mary was working with, as we worked towards the warrant articles for this coming town meeting, hazard mitigation planning, mobility analysis, as well as rapid recovery economic development grant, which again, that's the planning department bringing external money into Hingham. And of course, as I mentioned a little while ago, supporting the efforts in terms of planning proper and controlled development as appropriate in South Hingham. Michelle, just drop back just one slide, just for a second. Sorry. I started to go off and now I had to come back. I just wanted to highlight that I'm moving my mouse like you can see. The subbullets in the fourth bullet that I just read off, all of those in part, in large part drive my additional requests that you'll see, that you'll hear about in a moment. Just wanted to highlight that. Thank you, Michelle. So some COVID-19 impacts, similar to most other departments, it's about, you know, transitioning from in-person to electronic communications. And that's, you know, in a world of, the world of planning, a lot of that has always historically been done in person. And as a result of COVID, it had to be moved to a Zoom world, like most other things we do. So that was a major change in this field. A lot fewer onsite meetings, which, you know, a lot of you were regular contributors to. So, you know, in some ways, hopefully Zoom made that a little bit easier. I do feel sometimes that in, you know, while it may be easier, I think we lose a little bit of, a little something when we're not all sitting together around a room talking about projects. So it's important to understand that balance, as well as a few other, a few other impacts to the departmental process. Staffing expenses. So this department has been staffed in this manner for quite some time. Director of Community Planning and an administrative assistant, both full-time positions, and an expense line of $24,000. I am... So this, these numbers, this $166,000 in salaries is projected using the same existing staffing costs that we had in FY21, for FY21. So there's been no adjustment to this. As I mentioned, Mary departed in early January. So we are still working with the planning, the planning board, and all of, really all of the stakeholders, the entire second floor, the staff members. I've spoken with each of them. We have a lot of work to do to determine the best, the best way for this department to move forward. And we want to do that as a collective whole. In both, how this department needs to interact with the second floor as a whole, but also with the town as a whole. There's a lot of, like we pointed out, there's a lot of big plans afoot, and we need to make sure that they're being done with the entire organization in mind. And so we'll continue to have those discussions as we try to finalize our plans for this department. I will say that this is a budget that's in this book right now, that is, that has a fair chance of changing before we're done. You know, we needed to get these budget books out and get this process started. So we've done that. There is still work to be done on this budget. And I know I think I saw some advisory committee members, perhaps liaisons to this department on the line. I'm available at any time to reach out, try to schedule some discussions along these lines. So I look forward to those conversations. Onto the additional requests that I mentioned a little while ago. The staffing for this department has not changed in quite some time. As I mentioned, we're looking at, where Michelle and I, we're looking at both, not just the amount of work being done and coming down the pipe, but also the importance of that work. So while Michelle and I regularly talk about bandwidth in the community, I think it's equally, and you see it through these presentations from our amazing and talented department heads all the time, but it's really about getting, getting good qualified applicants to come in and help us in our mission. And so the quality of the work is as important as the quantity. And as a result, I think we, we need to, we should be seriously considering an assistant town planner for that, for that department, to assist us in getting through the myriad planning efforts that are vital to our near-term and long-term futures in town. So with that said, I will turn it over to questions. All right. Seeing none, Mary, thank you very much. Sorry, that was a page on the phone earlier. What, Mary, are you muted?
Sorry about that. Sometimes the urgent, sometimes the urgent crowds out the important. And if you, if you look at all this work, and I know before leaving, Mary was staffing four committees. And, you know...
Got all met tonight.
Right. And while this town runs on volunteers, and we are so grateful to the volunteers, we also know that successful boards and committees need to be staffed. That's what makes them effective, that in particular, new volunteers who kind of are trying to figure out how things get done in Hingham. And if you look at, if you look at the time and effort that the town put into the master plan, into the South Hingham Study Group work, I mean, into all these different things, the risk is that urgent will crowd out important work. And I think in particular, in this department, that would be, that would be to the detriment of the, of the town. Bill, any questions for, any questions for Tom? No softballs?
Oh, easy, Bill. And by the way, Emily is here to help if I need it.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for kind of stepping up here and helping out. I don't know if you know the answer to Tom. If you don't, that's fine. But I did kind of notice, you know, there's a request for an increase of $1,000 in office supplies, and then another $1,000 in advertising services. It struck me as, I'm not sure why those would need to be increased for that amount. Any ideas?
You know, I went through the department heads come to me with these budgets, and we did go through the evaluation. Michelle, do you remember those specific points?
I think so. And this is, if you look at what was spent in the last, in FY20 actuals, we're already above the budgeted amount. So we're trying to make sure we're budgeting.
True enough, yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. And just, and on the $65,000 for planning assistant town planner, you know, having come from the planning world, it's, Mary hit it right on the, hit it right on the head. It's super busy, a lot going on in town. And this is a very light year, looked projected to be a light year for zoning articles. And still, the current board has a full agenda every Monday night. So there's a lot going on down there. Presentation, Tom.
Thank you, Bill.
Joe, questions for Tom?
Tom, that was really a great presentation. I just want to, I'm glad this slide is up because you've got, right under the comprehensive master plan, you've got the South Hingham Development. And this past year, the town, including the, including Mary, including Emily, including others, really spent a lot of time with A.W. Perry, with Rich Beal, in coming up with a plan or reviewing possible options. Because if we're looking for increased revenue for the town and reasoned, appropriate development for the town, it's going to happen in South Hingham. And that is an area that really highlights the need for, as you said, quality review, not something that you can do last minute, and that will ultimately really benefit the town. So I'm glad you have that on there. We've all worked on it. And Tom, you've worked on it as well. And it's an area that we definitely need additional assistance for. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. I would just echo, as we're looking at revenue opportunities in the town of Hingham, South Hingham is the big revenue opportunity. And the sort of low-impact commercial development that we're talking about that would sort of anchor that development, it drives, it drives new growth, it drives new revenue. But also, more importantly, the town services that would support that development are not as intensive as, for example, a big residential development where, you know, it adds 100 kids to the schools. And so this is, this is something the town's been working on for many, many years. And again, it would be unfortunate if a short, if a staffing shortage, or just a bandwidth issue, meant that this work was, that this work was delayed. It benefits, it benefits all of us. Yeah. Any, any questions from the audience on the community planning budget? Okay.
Mary, if I could just jump in one last question or word. So as I stated, so Mary left, left the town's employ some two, two and a half weeks ago. In the interim, the second floor staff, and in particular, Emily Wentworth, has stepped forward, has stepped forward to, and Sherry as well, to really help us fill the void and stay on top of all these projects, continue to support the planning board in the, in the way that they expect and are used to. And I can't thank both Sherry and Emily enough for their efforts. And, you know, it's, it's just, it's, it's not surprising, even in the least, Mary, you've been stating it all, for the last week and a half, you know, that every single time something is needed in this town, our employees raise their hand and stand up and say, how can I help? And it's constant, it's never-ending. And in this particular instance, second floor staff, and in particular, Mary and Sherry have really done a great job. So thank you both of them.
Very much appreciated.
Tom, I don't think you meant Mary and Sherry. I think you meant...
Oh, I'm sorry. Emily and Sherry. Emily and Sherry. Yes.
Very much appreciated. Okay, next budget is, so now we're going to go through, we have, we have five or six budgets to go through. And these are all, these are all budgets that come from the Selectmen's Office. So...
I'll be doing this one as well.
Pardon?
I will be doing this one as well.
Okay.
Hold on just one second. Okay. So our, the Board of Selectmen's Budget, as you know, this is the Board of Selectmen's Office and staff, and I'll get into staffing in a minute. But by myself and Michelle, we have a lot of significant help from Sharon, Heidi, and our new procurement manager, Kathy Riley. So that's what the, that's who's doing this work. So, you know, in large part, our mission is the day-to-day operations of the town. It's, it's running the town and all the things that are happening in it, and making sure that, as I, as I said when I first started this job, that the department heads have what they need. That's a big part of what I see my job to be, is to make sure that they have what they need to do their jobs well. They're the experts in their fields, and Michelle and I help to staff that and make sure that, again, they're able to, to work as needed. There are approximately 200 employees on the town, on the non-school side. We have some six public employee unions across 23 departments in eight buildings. You know, we speak a lot of times about employees. And as we saw down in, down in Jennifer Young's presentation the other day, there are a lot of volunteers that come along with the employees in this town to get the work of the town done. In this instance, we help support approximately 400 local and effect, and appointed officials across 70 boards and committees. It's an amazing effort by a lot of people who, again, raise their hand when the town needs them. So thank you to all of them. We also implement, you know, policy decisions of this board. I think that, you know, one of the bigger thing, more important things that we do every year is prepare this process, the annual budget, and help the different departments with that work, as well as prep for and, and the work up to, and including the town meeting, the warrant that's involved with that, et cetera, including running the meeting. And then, of course, the annual town report. That I think is a town favorite. Everyone seems to like that. And, you know, we do all the, all the other, all the other backroom work, procurement, et cetera. We have a lot of citizen inquiries that we respond to on a regular basis. Public records requests are often filtered through this office. We manage all of our licenses and requests. There's a big, a big role there for Sharon and Heidi helping with that. You know, another important role that our office, I think, plays is the liaisonships with, or liaising, excuse me, with, with our legislative team, which is often considered, you know, it's Joan Moschino, it's Pat O'Connor, it's Jamie Murphy. And those folks help us so much with understanding the more regional outlook as well as the statewide outlook, and also helping us with grant opportunities and notifying us on important issues that we need to be aware of. So that's an important role. And then, of course, coordinating mitigation as it, as it comes up. As we are always proud to say, this is an additional slide that we slip in here every year. There are only 15 AAA communities in the state. And Hingham should hold its head very high and proud in being one of them. It's a heck of an accomplishment. It saves the taxpayers in Hingham significant dollars every year on, every time we issue money, every time we go to issue debt. So this is a, this is a really big deal. It's often glossed over because it's just, it's been this way for quite some time. But it's, it's an important, it's an important factor in, in the success that we have in running this town. So, okay. It's, it'll be weird to start a key initiative slide this year without starting with the coordination of the COVID-19 response. It has been an overwhelming effort by a lot of people. And I think we've done fairly well. I'm very proud of the effort in town. I think that this is an unprecedented task. And there's a lot of people that just pour their heart and soul into trying to keep the residents, employees, business people, and anyone else that happens in or out of this town, safe and healthy. So, of course, chief among, chief among people in that, in that field, as we heard the other night, is Susan Sarni and the efforts that she makes and her team. So, water system acquisition, that happened. So there's been a lot said about that, but none of it, it's impossible to underestimate the amount of effort and work evident in that. And of course, all spearheaded by our fearless leader, Selectmen Power. Public safety facility and senior center projects, these are not insignificant projects either. There's a lot... There's a lot of big work happening in town, and these are the important ones right now. This is what's in front of us right now, and that's the public safety facility, starting with the land acquisition that occurred in November. We received authorization and subsequently purchased the property in December, and at 335 Lincoln Street, for the purposes of building that public safety facility. The senior center project will be a result of building the public safety facility when the police department moves there. So, these projects are very much tied together. Completing and opening the new bathhouse, that kind of, you know, that also happened, right? One day, it was there, and the next day, we're buying hot dogs, and Michelle's getting her ice cream. That's, you know, it's going to be a shining light at the harbor for generations to come. We're perfecting the effort, we're finalizing the landscaping project, you know, program still needs to be put in place, there's still some last-minute touches, but that is just going to be such a gem for this town for such a long time, and so many people have played a huge role in it. So, that was a nice initiative to see completed. The preservation of the MBTA and ferry and train service, it's possible Mr. Fisher remembers this, like it happened seven years ago, right? I believe it was two weeks ago that you were spending just about every waking moment in more and more meetings with the state. These are the things that are funneled through this office. So, you know, all of the projects that the three of you regularly do. Economic development, South Kingdom Development, both, again, both, Phil and Joe, you guys have years of experience working in this field, from your experience in the second floor. The stuff like Mary said, this is the future of the town's revenue sources going forward. We need to make sure that that's done in a respectful, proper, and appropriate way. And if it's done that way, then we're going to be able to realize that necessary revenue. So, coordinating, sorry, coordinating the townwide analysis for all of our field and outdoor courts, Michelle has spearheaded this effort with a few others in town, with Mark Farrell, and some, Kevin Wayman played a big role, Randy Sylvester, and on the list goes, working closely with the sports partnership, Hingham Sports Partnership in town, and some of their representatives, trying to find the best path forward for our fields and outdoor courts. So, that's a big deal. And then, of course, as always, trying to find new money to bring into town from grant opportunities. All right, the impact of COVID, you know, was significant. We, as you all know, you were a part of it, you all voted it, it was the implementation of the FY21 Financial Management Plan. The creation of that plan was a Herculean effort of its own, getting through that effort, and a lot of people, Mary, Karen Johnson, you know, Michelle, and on, trying to get that plan completed and in place so that it made sense and melded with our budget. So, again, a big effort there. Working with the, on a daily basis with the COVID-19 Command Team, that's a subgroup of the Incident Command Team, the ICT, which is a component of the IMS, the Incident Management System, that MEMA, Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, has implemented for emergency management, all actions of emergency management. These things usually last two or three days. We stood up our IMT some eight, 10 months ago, and we've been meeting in different capacities seemingly daily since. So, that's a big effort as well. Implementing remote work, we've heard that from most of our department heads, you know, trying to get through everyone trained in Zooming efforts and whatnot, and of course, helping to manage the public meetings via that tool. Coordinating our first-ever outdoor meetings in Hingham, that was an effort that was done through this office, though with, again, the help of just about every department touches one aspect or another of that project. Helping restaurants reopen. You guys had about 20 or 30 different restaurant openings, seemingly every other week, you were reading off all those new rules and regs during your meetings. I think that effort helped to save a lot of restaurants in a very trying time. And then, of course, coordinating the CARES Act reimbursement funds as a result of COVID. We do this with salaries of about $500,000, full-time personnel, myself, Michelle, and then we have, as I said, Kathy Riley is our new procurement's contract manager, Sharon Perfetti is our office manager, and Heidi Gall is our administrative clerk, and then our three part-time personnel, which I believe are listed as the three of you, volunteers as you are. And, of course, we have an expense line. You know, some of the major items you'll see in our expense line are property, consulting needs, et cetera. We did this year move some, move items from the unclassified budget back into our budget because we just felt it was more descriptive of what those items actually were.
Bill, questions for Tom?
I'm sorry, dear.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Additional request line.
Please.
My fault. So, one of the big changes in the budget this year that I'm proposing for our department is a $35,000 line item for Communications Consultant. This is in part the same discussion we had last year, where I was advocating for a Public Information Officer, a PIO officer. The idea at the time was to bring in someone in a full-time, permanent role that would be able to help us with communications. And as Michelle and I worked through, that didn't get funded last year, we worked through COVID, but really more specifically, Joe, some of the efforts that you worked with on the MBTA issues, we saw what a Communications Consultant is capable of doing, and we're interested in that model, and I think it's an opportunity to try that in a less permanent way than a permanent position would be. And we can give this a shot, see if it works, it's adjustable or removable on an annual basis, and we've received some quote, just to give us a rough ballpark of what this number ought to look like, and this is what we're coming up with. I do believe that one of the big things that I think this position would help us with is about, it's not promotion, it's not promoting, it's about explaining to the public and informing the public of the wonderful things that are happening on their behalf in their town every day, that it's really hard to communicate with, so, to communicate out. So, we're hopeful that this consultant would be able to help us with that effort, as well as some other things like crisis management, press liaisons, emergency response, et cetera. Sorry, Mary, now?
No, thank you. You know, I think with this position, what you're talking about is pushing information out there and making it more accessible for people.
That's exactly right.
Which, one of the things that I think we've heard over time is that people are interested in knowing that, and their expectation is that we sort of push it out. And, you know, right now, our method of doing that is like the Town of Hingham email alerts, and, you know, you can't send out an alert about everything. So, Bill, questions for Tom about the Selectmen's Budget? Joe?
Yeah, Tom, thanks for that presentation. I agree with you in terms of the public relations, that's really was exceptionally helpful on the MBTA work that we were doing, and I anticipate it will be exceptionally helpful in the near term as we address the need for communications on COVID testing, COVID vaccinations, and so I think it's a real tribute to you that you've recognized the need and are addressing it. It's not pushing out information for the sake of pushing it out, it's pushing out information so our residents can take advantage of what the town has to offer, so they know what's going on. It's really just, it's needed, and I really appreciate it. I do have one question on the budget. There's an item for town report of $6,000, last year it was zero. What, is this a reallocation or something?
Yes, this is one of the items, Joe. There's four there at the bottom that used to be in the unclassified budget.
Oh, I see them.
It just didn't really make sense being there, so we moved it into this budget. That's why you don't see the history in this sheet.
Makes sense. Other than that, great job, thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions, it's just, you know, looking at that list, the one thing that I would just point out is that none of the day-to-day stuff that goes on in the Selectmen's Office is reflected here. You know, whether it's a citizen issue, a question, you know, we are a people-intensive business, so we have, you know, we hire people, we often, you know, sometimes there are people issues that have to be dealt with, and, you know, the day-to-day work, I think, you know, Tom and I talk in the morning, and I sort of say, "Well, you know, what's on your day for today?" And he says, "Oh, it is, and this is," and then, you know, we touch base at the end of the day, and he's like, "Yeah, I know that." He starts walking, it's all very unexpected, and some of that is the nature of municipal government, and I think it's to the credit of the caliber of our people that we can pivot like that. I will just say that, you know, from my perspective, I think that we are so fortunate to have such a dedicated and capable team. I think you're all stretched to the max, I think you're all very efficient with your time, but I think, I think success begets success, and I think that the demands that a $100 million municipality like Hingham is imposing, I, you know, I just worry about people burning up. And I think, you know, Tom and Michelle, over the last few years, have taken a thoughtful, prudent approach to looking at what's needed, adding Kathy Riley, and reorganizing the engineering department, I think, has worked very well. This is the next step, and I would also say there are going to be other steps, but I think Tom and Michelle are also conscious of the financial environment that we find ourselves in. So, I like the approach of kind of taking this one step at a time. And I would also just say, you know, that, you know, I know there's a lot of talk about things like, you know, the Master Plan Committee addressing, you know, suggesting a facilities manager and things like that. I would urge the town, I would urge my colleagues, I would urge the advisory committee, Tom and Michelle should be the ones prioritizing the resources that they need. Tom and I haven't always agreed on that, but I think, I think what I've learned is that he and Michelle are best able to prioritize what they and the town need, and I would encourage us all to listen and to support them in those efforts.
Mary, if you don't mind, if I just take one last second and just thank the team. I know I mentioned them earlier, you know, Sharon has been with us for a number of years now, she's the lifeblood of our office, she keeps everything moving, and has a lot of historical and local knowledge within our office, and we just simply don't work without her. Heidi has been with us now for a year or so, she is, she hit the ground running, hasn't stopped since she got here. So, we just love having her, she's a bundle of energy, she can do anything we ask her to, and she does it all well. Kathy has started, Michelle, several months ago?
Yeah, early November.
Yep, three-ish months ago, and again, she has fit right into the organization, the department heads all appreciate having the ability to, whenever something needs to be purchased, whether it's over thresholds or not, they can call Kathy and walk through with her best practices. And I just think that that is gold for the town. And Kathy brought so much experience with her, to us, from her life at the state level. So, we're just thrilled to have her on board. And I think you all know, I know what you all think of Michelle, you know, I can't state enough that this town doesn't run without Michelle Monseigneur. She is my right hand. Everything that we do, we do together. We run ideas past one another, we run this town as a team, and I just can't, I couldn't do what I do, this town wouldn't be able to run without Michelle, and her intelligence, her efforts, and her willingness to take on any project, and the result is always A-plus work. So, thank you, Mary.
Well, thank you, and, you know, Tom is one other very important part of this team, and that's the chief, and, you know, that's you, and your dedication and commitment to Hingham is, I can't even put into words, it's off the charts, and there, above all, every citizen in this town can always count on you doing the right thing for the town. You always put the town first, and that moral compass that you have, and the way you approach things, sets an example for all of us, and is just such a big part of why this is a fantastic town. And, you know, we can talk about metrics like AAA and things like that, this is a wonderful community, and it's because of, in large part, the people who work and support this community, and that starts with the leader. And, you know, as I think about the response to COVID, there's no manual for how to deal with COVID. There's no, you know, what to do, how to do it. I think the town's response to COVID, as you said, has been outstanding, and you have led your team, our team, and the town through a very difficult time, and thank you doesn't begin, thank you doesn't begin to cover it. So, okay, so now, let's talk about the legal budget.
Michelle is going to show you just how smart she is with the rest of these budgets.
Yeah, and some of these, I think, are like one or two slides, these are some of the ones that are a little quicker. So, take it away, Michelle.
Sure, so our Legal Services Budget, this basically is $257,000 in FY22. The town has four council that assists us in a variety of areas. We've got General Counsel John Coughlin, Real Estate Counsel Susan Murphy, Labor Counsel Kevin Feely, and Litigation Counsel Carrie Ryan, along with some other counsel, like Bond Counsel, who assists us in more specialized areas. Some of the major expenses this year and going forward are COVID-19, obviously, the water acquisition, the purchase of 335 Lincoln Street, and then litigation. And this is, we do have a structural deficit in the Legal Services Budget, as you can see from the chart at the bottom of the screen. Over the last 10 years, we have, I think the five-year average is 47%, we budgeted 47% of what we actually needed to pay for legal services. So, we are trying to gradually close this gap between what we're able to budget and what we actually need to spend, and so we have an additional request of $25,000 this year, as we put before the board in years past, to try to get a little bit closer to a number that's a little bit more aligned, in line with what we need in this area.
Joe, questions for Michelle about the legal budget?
Yes, who, is there, do you feel that the legal budget is being managed effectively? And who, is it Tom responsible, or Michelle, who is responsible for that?
I do, I think we put into place a year or two ago, a system where department heads need to request legal services or legal counsel through us, so we try to manage it a little bit that way. And we also started to do office hours with John Coughlin, General Counsel, as well as Kevin Feely, Labor Counsel, to try to make them more available on a regular basis to department heads around our department head schedule. We've fallen a little bit out of that in the COVID world right now, but some of this, Joe, is also, as you know, out of our control with things like COVID that hit, or litigation that comes, you know, that wasn't expected, things like that.
Yeah, I mean, I know there was a time that departments would sort of go out on their own, and I really appreciate your coordinating all that. No other questions, thank you.
Bill, questions on the legal budget? Bill, questions on the legal budget?
Yeah, we have, we do have a very good legal team. I didn't work with, with the team over the years. I'm, so, over the past couple of months, I, I do think it's a good team. Yeah, I, I just think we need to work harder here on this budget. Looking at FY20, spent $745,000 on legal costs. Obviously, 21 were down at 257, which is, which is better, but I, you know, maybe we could talk offline how we do that, but we really need to work hard on, to bring this budget down. I, I, I guess that every, almost a lot, a lot, every, every big action item we undertake does go through legal in some capacity. I think that's an area where we can, we can show some improvement, so looking forward to working with you on that, but thank you.
Yeah, great, Bill. Thank you for that, yeah.
I, I might just ask, as a, as a follow-up, Michelle, I know Sharon keeps kind of a spreadsheet, but it would, it would be helpful for me to see kind of what the, what the breakout is of actual expenses against those four areas, because I, I do think, you know, to Bill's point in terms of managing the budget, seeing those pieces is helpful. For example, I know that in, in a year when there's, you know, when there's a lot of land use issues, Real Estate Counsel might be really involved, or if there's, if, if there's litigation, I, I think, I think that just might help. I've sort of heard, you know, I, I don't know if there's any kind of a rule of thumb, but I don't disagree with any of the comments, but I would also point out that our legal budget is less than 1% of the whole town's operating budget. And, you know, part of me kind of wonders, like, what is, what is it, what is an appropriate target for legal services that we should have? You know, I, it's, it's more of a, you know, more of a question than, than, than anything else. Okay, members of the public, any questions on the legal budget? Okay, next one, Michelle, is Town Hall? All right.
On page 96. So Town Hall, as you all know, we're, it's managed by an excellent team under Jeff Peasey. And new in FY21, we, we do have another part-time Town Hall maintenance person who, who joined the team this year that was approved through the budget process last year, which is great because this is a very large facility. It's 137,000 square feet, last renovated about 23-ish years ago, and it contains a whole bunch of different functions, including town departments, it's our police headquarters, our senior center, our rec department headquarters and some of their facilities, our school administration offices, and our regional 911 dispatch center. So the building's constantly in use. Obviously, the police and the 911 dispatch center are there, working every day 24/7, so the facility requires, you know, round-the-clock maintenance. The same maintenance team also supports a couple other municipal facilities as needed, so 308 Cushing Street, JR Hall, H. Short Street, and they support a lot of different public meetings when, you know, in non-COVID world and special events. They were critical in implementing our COVID-19 protocols with PPE, with different cleaning guidelines that we've needed to follow with the erecting of plastic barriers in different offices. And they also took advantage of the time that we were fully remote in the beginning of the pandemic to undertake some painting and other repairs in the building when, when no one was in the main office part of it. So that was very helpful. Our total FY22 budget request for salaries is about $258,000, and then expenses is another
And, and it looks, Michelle, like that's a slight reduction versus 2021.
Right, and part of this is, we are, we have a lunchroom, a cafeteria in Town Hall, and we're not going to be able to reopen that. There's a longer-term plan there to move that type of facility into the renovated senior center space, so we have, we have taken out those expenses and salaries at this time.
Thank you. Bill, any questions for Michelle on the Town Hall budget?
The budget looks great. I just got a question. I saw it on the library as well, and I should have asked last night, Tuesday night, but what, what is longevity, what is that, what, what does that cover?
That's, that's part of our salaries. I'd have to look at the Personnel Bylaw. It might be when you're here for more than 10 years, but as your years of service go up, employees get longevity payments or siphoned, basically.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And, and Michelle, that's in lieu of a step increase, right? That's when you, when you max out on the steps.
It's, it comes into play after that, maybe even after 10 years instead of five or six for the steps.
Got it, nice.
Joe, questions on this budget?
Yeah, just in terms of structure. So looking at, you know, utilities like water, or sewer, gas, does that include utilities used by the Police Department and the Senior Center, or is that captured in their own budgets?
Those are all captured here in the Town Hall budget. The one difference is Shrek, the Regional 911 Dispatch Center, because that's a multi-town separate entity. They do pay rent and a portion of, of utilities for Town Hall.
No other question, thank you.
Yeah, I have no questions. Does anyone in the public have a question or wish to make a comment about the Town Hall budget? Okay, seeing none, next is, is Town Meeting.
I always like picking the picture for these slides. So, so Town Meeting, the last few years, we've had some, you know, outlier Town Meetings in FY19. We had the 2,000-person, two-night Town Meeting where we considered purchasing the water system. In FY20, yeah, we had our first outdoor Town Meeting in Hingham's history, which required some extra expenses because of COVID and having to set up both an inside and outside venue. And then obviously, this year, we've already had a special Town Meeting, and we'll have another Town Meeting sometime in the spring. So we based this budget on a, a more normal year, and we're hoping that's what FY22 will turn out to be. So we haven't, we've increased this a little bit in terms of the cost of the rental equipment because some of the audio services and things like that have gone up, but we haven't, we budgeted for one annual Town Meeting in FY22 for now. You know, should that change, we will look at some sort of transfer or reserve fund transfer. But right now, it's your basic Town Meeting. And one, one thing we did do was we took out of the Town Clerk's budget, or her election's budget, the line for stenographer, which I believe Eileen mentioned the other night, and we put it into the Town Meeting budget because that seemed to be the right place for it.
And so, Michelle, this will run through July through June 30th of '22. So if there is a special Town Meeting in the fall of '22 for foster school and potentially a public safety facility, that would be the FY23 budget?
That's right.
Okay. Joe, any questions for Michelle?
No, very thorough, thank you.
No?
No questions, thank you.
Just, Michelle, a question about, about the Town Meetings that we had outside. Am I correct that we've submitted for CARES Act reimbursement for some of that?
Yes, well, and I think we still need to for some of the fall one and the next submission, but yes, anything that we can put under there, we will.
Excellent, thank you. Members of the public, any questions on the Town Meeting budget? Okay, Michelle, do you want to do the, the Health Imperatives and South Shore Women's? I mean, are those, are those together?
I think so.
Yeah, I, I just run through them together.
Sure. So these two are relatively small budgets for the Health Imperatives and the South Shore Women's Resource Center, like Mary mentioned. Both of these agencies provide services to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence in Hingham and in the South Shore in general. And these are, for relatively small dollars, they're able to help a number of, of survivors in Hingham each year and also provide some training in partnership with our students. These are essentially service agreements to provide this type of service that the town is not able to provide. They're respectively $2,700 a year for Health Imperatives and $3,700 a year for the South Shore Women's Resource Center.
Michelle, when I was on the Advisory Committee, it was $2,500 and $3,500 for years, and then one year, we said, well, why don't, why don't we increase our contribution by 200? Because they said, well, gee, maybe that would compel other communities to, you know, increase their contribution. Have we ever gotten a request from either of these agencies for additional funding? Because I, I think we, I think we increased it by 200 like 10 years ago.
It's been held steady. In recent years, we haven't had a specific request recently.
Okay, thank you. Joe, any questions for Michelle?
Yeah, am I correct that our sister communities participate as well in these, in these efforts?
I believe they do.
I mean, it's, it's, it's not just Hingham. So I'm, I'm really glad that we, we have this available. Thank you.
Bill, any questions? Okay, I think he said no questions, okay? Okay, Michelle, Michelle, Tom, thank you. Public comments on any items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, Town Administrator reports. Michelle, anything to report tonight? No, thank you. Tom?
Not tonight, thank you, Mary.
Joe?
Nope, not tonight, thank you.
Bill?
Very good luck to you and the Bills Mafia on Sunday.
Yeah.
I know, I know what your real video will be about 6:40 PM at night on Sunday.
It's gonna be a long day waiting. And I, I would just say that I saw on Facebook, I believe Jack Ramsey turned 10 today.
He, he did, yes, he did.
So happy birthday, and I, I, we appreciate, Bill, you know, this town runs on volunteers, and had, had I known it was Jack's birthday, I would have proposed a different night to meet. And I, I would just say to, you know, to, to members of the public, it, it is a privilege and honor to, to serve in these roles, and there are times when that sometimes takes us away from our families and other events, and I just, I, I think it, it speaks to Bill's commitment to the town, and we, we, we hope that there has been a family celebration today. The lawn looked good with the big letters. South Shore Line design. But thank you, thank you for being here this evening. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday night. We will, will we be hearing any budgets? I don't think so. I think we maybe, we have, we have a recreation budget to hear, and then, and then we will, we will have a joint meeting at a certain point with the Advisory Committee and the School Committee to begin looking at the school budget after our School Committee colleagues have, have gone through their budget workshops. So with that, I would take a motion to adjourn at 10:03 PM. Don't move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Mary?